All right, thank you and welcome. We have a pretty full agenda tonight, so starting as always in a place to get ourselves realigned, Tori, would you mind doing a mindfulness piece?
All right, thank you very much. All right, agenda review. We had item number three here, just found that Lisa Graves is actually out of town, so we're gonna push that out to November, I'd rather do it in person. And then, the retreat minutes were inadvertently missed coming in here, so we'll add those to the meeting, the November meeting consent agenda, and toss those in here. And then, in the minutes section, in the minutes from the last me, from the September 11th meeting, there was an item in there, in item, section 6A1, that had the total debt service from the capital project being 3.7 million, and it said each year. That is the cumulative effect of the three-year bonding up to the third year, and then from the third year out, it's each year, so we'll correct the minutes to show 700, then 2.9 cumulatively, and then 3.7 cumulatively. So the second year in there will be a pretty good step in the, in the bond load, so just to note that that is, will be a change in there as well. Some minor edits also beyond that to spelling, and just a couple of other minor changes will be made. Otherwise, that's it. Did anybody else have anything, anything else? Okay, great. So with that, we move into our fourth cultural presentation?
Yeah, I think it's fourth.
I think it's our fourth one.
Fifth.
Fifth.
We've got one more after this.
Okay, great. And this, tonight Burmese, you wanna?
Yeah, I'll let Kirsten.
Kirsten, you wanna?
Great. Hi, everybody.
Welcome back.
Nice to see you again. Um, yeah, so this is our fifth presentation, we have one more next month, and tonight I want to introduce Farida Ko. She is our Burmese and Korean homeschool liaison, she supports our Burmese Muslim and Korean families that have been relocated from refugee camps in Thailand. And I, I just wanna say again how much the liaisons do. They work tirelessly, they take phone calls at night, they are worth their weight in gold, so I am, I'm very happy to introduce Farida.
My name is Farida Ko. I am Burmese and a homes, Korean homeschool liaison. I don't speak Korean, but most of our Korean families speak Burmese, so I can communicate with them. Greetings, Burmese Muslim also greet us, Assalamualaikum, which mean peace be upon you, and we say Mungulaba, that is when we greet Burmese, not Burmese Muslim, or with Korean, we can say Mungulaba. Also, male and female do not shake hands, for Korean, they can shake hand. Also, Koreans, they greet, like, they greet as, they say good morning, good afternoon, and good evening, so which is Gola Gay means good morning, Ni La Gay mean good afternoon, and Ha La Gay means good evening. Burmese Muslim background, we pray five times a day, read Quran, and we do pilgrimage, which is, we call it Hajj, tumaka. We are required to perform Hajj if we have enough money. Also, alms given, we call it Zakat during Ramadan. We give, alms given to people who don't have enough during Ramadan. Young men and, young boys and men are required to do circumcision. We do it the age of infant to five years old, or older. Where we came from, originally from Burma, now known as Myanmar. And Thailand refugee camp. The, the wordings are really small, but I'm gonna go show you.
Yep, please, please.
So, this is where I come from, and most of our refugees, Burmese and Korean refugees come from, which, we call it, the camp name is Ong Bian Camp. Burma and Thailand on the world map, as you can see, the, on the right, it is showing Burma and Thailand and border, and with some other countries that is border. And that is map of Burma and Thailand. So I'm gonna show you where I come from. So this is where we come from Burma, and that would be here in Thailand border. And this is Chin state. We have, we had couple families from Chin state in the past, but they moved out to another The main cause that led refugees to escape from Burma was the new government. More than 1 million Korean and Burmese Muslim have been displaced since 1996 in the face of systematic human rights violations, including rape, forced labor, and torture by Burmese army. The situation with the Burmese army started in 1960, but got worse when the new government military dictatorship took control. In 1997, many refugees escaped to Thailand refugee camps, including my family. Some other cause that led Burmese Muslim and Korean ethnic groups to escape from Burma are racism, silver words, and genocide. That is still happening in Burma right now. We became refugees due to threats to our life and to our village. So like I said, racism, silver word, and genocide. Many Korean and Burmese Muslim, and some other ethnic, ethnic group had to leave across the border Thailand refugee camp, and we became refugees there. Journey to Thailand refugee camps. On the way to Thailand refugee camps, some got transportation, it's, some, some walk thousand miles to get to Thailand refugee camps, with a lot of struggles, right? Somebody have baby that they carry, and some are pregnant women, and they deliver their baby during the walk to Thailand refugee camp. This is how refugee, resident car, ID card looks like in Thailand refugee camp, and we have to have this ID card in order to live in Thailand refugee camp. If we don't have it, we will, probably will get kicked out from Thailand refugee camp. And this is Opean Camp in Thailand, and that is where I came from. Houses are built with bamboos and tall grasses. Once you start a little fire, the whole camp will gone. And that had happened several years ago, and my family's home, not, my cousins and some other relatives' homes were gone, and they had nothing left.
Tori, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
How long were you and your family in the camp before you were resettled?
Um, I was, I remember, they, they fled the country after two year I was born.
Mm-hmm.
So it was, yeah, 1995 to Thailand refugee camp, to 2008, so it was a long time.
And then you were resettled in Vermont, or you were somewhere before coming to Vermont?
No, in Vermont, right to Winuski. And we have never moved out of Winuski.
Thank you, we're happy about that.
I forgot to mention that Farida is also a one-year-old high school graduate from the back of 2012.
Yeah, with Katie.
Nice to see you.
What was it like living in Thailand refugee camp? No permanent place to live. Life in refugee camps was hard with so many struggles. There were no permanent place to live, because we were constantly moving camp to camp. UN rented refugee camp from native people in Thailand. When they want their land back, we need to move without any options. It's rain or shine, doesn't matter, we had to move. So personally, my family's moved three camps all total. And what was it like living in Thailand refugee camps? No permanent jobs. So there were no permanent jobs in the camp, so every day, we had to search for jobs, and some people would get it from native people, and they are rich, and they do a lot of farming, so they need people to do their farm, so they hire refugees, and they pay refugees. And we cannot go out of the camp. As you can see, the fence are with dangerous wire. So refugees are not allowed to go out of the camp, and we, we can be arrested by Thai police if caught. They must instead work to, try to work to support themselves inside of the camp. Some, some, they, they did go out of the camp, and then, because they needed provide their families, working inside of the camp wasn't enough to provide families. If we want to go out of the camp, we have to apply for permit. Sometime it can be a day permit, which we had to pay for like 20 baht, which would be a dollar, almost a dollar from, for United States money. But 20 baht is a lot in Thailand refugee camp. You need to work hard to earn that kind of money in Thailand refugee camp. So that permit has an expiration date. If, if you, if the Thai police asks you to show the permit and it is expired, so you, you can get arrested by them, and they will throw, throw you to the jail for 45 days. You have to, if you can pay them fine, and you can, you can get out of the jail, but we didn't have much money that they asked for, so a lot of people chose to stay in the jail for 45 days. What was like living in Thailand refugee camps? Not, not enough free. UNHCR provides some monthly essentials, items such as rice, oil, and salt. Rotations are only provide to register resident, who are physically present at the distribution. But that was not enough to provide the whole family. We needed money for other house use materials or clothes. We couldn't buy those things if we don't work outside of the camp. But as I said earlier, people stay, still go out of the camp at their own risk. It was hardship living in Thailand refugee camp, but we were thankful for Thai government that, because they give us place to settle. Food and daily life in refugee camp, rice, fruits and vegetables, fish, fish and shrimp paste, meat, less because it is expensive to get. So rice, rice is our main meal for daily breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We eat rice with fish or meat curry with vegetables. We do a lot of curries and fried or boiled, mostly less meat, because like I said, it's expensive to buy. And I show you, this is, this is fish and shrimp paste, and it is popular in Burma or Thailand, also cheap. Those are the wild vegetables that we can get it from the forest, bamboo shoots, mushroom, and salad leaves, berries, and some named vegetables. We can get this from the forest without any cost, and a lot of families go search for those kind of vegetables and salad leaves and berries, because they can sell, they can bring to the, to the camp and then sell and earn money from it. And some family do, some families do gardening to earn money, but not a lot of family did There are two major holidays for Burmese Muslim. Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha. The first thing we do on holiday is to pray at the mosque with families and friends, and then family and friends come together at their home or some other place, enjoy families traditions and food. Holidays for Korean, New Year, Tin Jang, which is water festival, Korean Riz time ceremony, and Christmas. Some Koreans are Christians and some are Buddhism. So Buddhism celebrate water festival, New Year, and Korean Riz time ceremony by the lunar calendar. Christians celebrate Christmas and New Year. During those holy, holy days, families and friends come together and enjoy tradition like, traditional dancing, and food. I don't know if you ever heard about Riz time ceremony? So I printed out, handout, and it has more information in it, because if I talk about it, it will take a lot of time, so I just print it out. And so, this is Riz time ceremony, and only elders couple can tie younger children's And this is water festival, and this is traditional dancing, and this is also traditional dancing with their traditional clothes on. Respect elders. So we don't call an adult by their names, because it is very disrespectful if we do that, like, in our culture. Let's say Kirsten is, I know Kirsten, and Kirsten is older than me, and she is, she is Burmese, and I can't call her her name. Kirsten, it would be so disrespectful, and the other side will be so offensive if I call her name. If chance of meeting stranger, we use the word sir or man, otherwise, we use the word uncle, auntie, sister, brother, niece, something like that, and depending on their age. So there are age, age, major nationality of Burma, and with their cultural clothing on, and where they come from. You can see the red dot on the map, and that is where they come from. And you can see that their traditional clothes are very, very similar, but the design are different, and I'm wearing one. I forgot to add a slide about this, I'm wearing on my face, it's called Tanaka, which is, we call it easy wear Burmese makeup, because it's from Burma, and made it from Burma. It is actually a tree, a tree that can grow, only grow in Burma, and we can make paste out of it, and sometime we use it as stone and rub it hers, and the stuff will come out and put it on. And that is for, like, protect our skin, and we do a lot of farming in the camp, so a lot of women use these to protect their skin. Sometime, men also use it, but not a lot, that you can see. Process, and examination to come to America. It was a long wait and process to come to America. There are four step, as you can see there. We had to, first, we had to apply for, apply and fill out application to come to America at the OPE, through IOM and UNHCR, and they also interviewed us, us as a first step. The second step will be IOM and UNHCR will re-interview us to see if there's any information, any information changes. The third step will be, once application is approved, and there will no problem with our applications, then there is, it is time to for medical examinations, where we had to go another, another city. It has a, it have a big hospital, and we had to camp out for a week to see if they're, to get medical intentions as needed, or if, if we have any problem, they will, they will let us know in, in six month. And if we, if some people, like, like my family, my little sister was really sick, so we had to stay for another six month, and then go to the hospital, get medical intentions, and then, they see if she is safe to travel, then they approve everything. Finally, orientations, it is, it is to learn about American culture, what is okay, what is not okay, like, hidden kids, it is not okay in America, but in Thailand, you can do whatever you want to your kid, because it is your kid. But it's very different from here. Life in America. Personally, at first, it was bittersweet, because, it was bitter, because we had to leave our country and, I don't know, I get emotional.
We've seen it before, and we understand, so take your time.
Sorry.
That's okay. Take your time, we are not in a hurry. And we certainly understand, if we can't understand, we can appreciate it.
It was bitter when we first got here, because we had to leave everything there, and start a new life here, and I didn't, I didn't, my family and I didn't speak any English as, when I started school here, and I had a problem at school, because I didn't know the language, and I didn't do my homework and schoolwork, so I had a really bad grade the first year.
And you were 12?
No, I was 15 years old.
Wow.
Also, we didn't know how to use stove, wash, washing machine, and like, how to shop, because it is very different from where we came from, and then here. Here, we have a big supermarket with a lot of nice cashier's that we had to check out at the end, but there, you can just get whatever you want and pay for it, and you're done. And life in America, you have to have social security card, I-94, and green car. When we first got here, we also got temporary permit ID, that is to work here. By the time we got here, they said that we have to have this car in order to work, otherwise, they won't, they won't accept for employment. Education system in refugee camps. So you already know education system in America, so I will tell you a little bit about education system back in refugee camps. We had to learn four languages, which is Korean, Burmese, Thai, and English. And it was really bad, because you have to learn, you have to learn those at once, in one day, so no one can do it. Only some students can do it, because they are really smart, I'm not one of them. And we also had to do three government exam in four grade, seven grade, and 10 grade, that we had no idea what the exam will look like, until we got the paper, exam papers in the classroom. If you don't pass the exam, no matter how old you are, you have to stay, you have to stay in that grade and pass, otherwise, you, you can't go to the next grade. So 15, 15 years old can be in third grade, fourth grade. So a lot of student dropped out of middle school and high school. There are more than 20 kids in one classroom with one teacher. Teacher beat, if we don't pass exam, or if we don't do our homework, and if we don't do, and also if we are late for school, they beat us. And you don't need a college degree to teach. And sometime teachers are really bad at teaching, and they don't know how to teach, basically. They only knew how to beat. That was their strength. How can the school do a better job for helping support the community? More translation handouts about school, either summarize handouts or alert message, like what is happening at school for this. like what is happening at school for this week, next week, or today, or the next day. I know we sent out an English document, and it is a lot to translate, but if we can summarize the, about the documents and send it to home, it would be helpful for the families. And more technology class for the parents, because parents have no idea what their students are doing on the computer or on the internet. When they, when parents ask student, what are you doing on your computer right now? They would, they would say, I'm doing my homework, but that is not always true. Need more communication between parents and teachers, school and administrators, like how the students are doing. Sometime we got a phone calls from the teachers and school administrators at the end of the year, saying, this student is not graduating, and can you call home to let the parents know? And parents will blame us, saying, oh, why didn't you tell me earlier? So we can prepare. Also have cultural activities, like after school, or cultural day, or like cultural food day at school. It will be helpful. That is just a idea I came up with. So Burmese and Korean are very similar until we got here. So only, Burmese has extra letters. So this is, this is Korean, and that is Burmese letter. We, we share alphabet, letters. And here are some phrases if you want to learn, and we use those in school here for, for teacher. Like hello is hello, because they don't say hello. They greet as a good morning, good afternoon, good good evening, so. Do you want me to say it? Or, yeah? So listen would be kana, that would be listen. Qua. You, you see that sometime we don't pronounce the way that they are spelling there? Heli, which may come here. Chinaw, which means sit down. Patu, means stop. Te, tepuyaki, which may repeat after me. Good job, gema, thank you, tablo. And that, the, on the right, it is Burmese. Hello is menglaba. How are you, nikangla? Listen, na thangba. Look, digo jiba, come here, digo lava, sit down, kai ba. Stop, yaba, repeat after me. Ngasura, laisoba. Good job, to de. Thank you, jezu temba de. And number of students in this, in the district. We have twenty-two Burmese and Korean students through pre-K through twelve. Thank you for listening. Any questions?
I have just a couple. You mentioned how can we help your community differently? You mentioned tech classes for parents. Time of day, I mean, is that an evening thing, does that?
Yes, mostly evening thing. Because parents also work, and some parents may not be able to do it, because they do second shift jobs, so, but some parents definitely can do it.
And you mentioned four languages in school. Did I understand you to say you didn't speak Korean, but Thai, Burmese, and English?
Correct, but you had to learn. And I can read, I can read Korean, but I have no idea what it is saying. I can, I can read the actual, let's say if it is letters, I can read the letters, but I have no idea what it is saying.
I'm glad we changed our acronym from E S L, English as a Second Language, to English Language Learners, because we are really ignorant when it comes to that, but go ahead.
I want to make a comment on that. So your presentation was wonderful. The only thing I disagree with is when you said that you weren't smart enough, because if your definition of smart is having this bar of four languages to learn in one day, in one day, then I, I don't think any of us in this room is smart. And I just want you to know that you are an extremely intelligent person, and we thank you for being our teacher today, and teaching us about your community, and helping us figure out how we can better serve, so that we become a better community that is inclusive of everybody. And I guess my question is, is we, we know that you are a weight, the work that you all have done for our community is invaluable, and I guess the question is, how can our infrastructure, our schools help better provide professional development for you, so that you can also accomplish your dreams? Because it is a great, I'm recognizing the sacrifice that you have given to get, help others in the community to reach their dreams, but are we meeting your dreams as a professional? And how can we help you grow more as a professional?
We have like a lot of trainings here, and we, as a liaison, also came to the trainings and learn about the school and the communities, and that is helping us.
Would you ever want to be a full-time teacher?
I am not a teacher, I am a homeschool liaison.
No, I know, but would you ever want, you personally?
Personally?
Personally, ever want to get the degree and the qualifications?
Yes, my dream.
Yeah, and that's what I want to hear, your dreaming.
Because I have kids, and I have to work to pay my bills. So I am trying to go back to college and finish my dream.
And I guess that's what I want us to figure out, is how do we, as a community, as a school district, help you reach those levels, you know?
In my tuition.
I appreciate you saying that, that's what we need to hear.
Like, how do we, as a community, figure out how to help pay for the tuition? Because once again, we're not, as I know, probably paying you enough for those phone calls at ten P M, eleven P M.
Yeah, I just got a couple of phone calls on the way to here, but I didn't pick up, but I would definitely call after.
And to me, it's just, it's, you know, you all know how I feel, and I'll just leave it at that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, that was wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dante, you did very good.
Did I tell you I wasn't nervous?
But you did wonderful.
You did great.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you again to Farida, and I just, Alex, I also wanted to second, you know, what you were saying about professional development and providing, like helping to fulfill dreams of the community members. The, one of the big challenges I've been hearing a lot about, and you know, talking with a couple of our liaisons, who are licensed teaching staff in their home countries, and not being able to get that relicensor in Vermont, and how challenging that is for, for a lot of, you know, professionals who have been resettled here, that they, they can't go back to doing what they want to do, and what they're trained to do because of that, because of those, you know, logistical bars that they have to, you know, jump, and it's just too much to work and go back to school and take care of family.
It don't advocate this standpoint in good way.
We're also going to be diversifying our school teachers and all this. This is like the, one of the, well, not the easiest path, but it's a great pipeline opportunity.
Absolutely.
And just to piggyback on your comments, I did hear one comment from one of our liaisons, who mentioned that the school year only work load doesn't quite cut it. And so I was kind of happy though, when we had the city meeting with us, the equity forum, part of what came out of that was trying to find a way to utilize their talents year round, and figure out how to do that, so. There's a couple of different forms in there, depending on where they are.
Yeah, and I know Sean and I had a meeting with Jesse Baker yesterday to talk about exactly that, how to, how to develop those year-round positions, because the city really wants to do that outreach as well. And it would really help to, you know, create more cohesion between the city, the school, and the community.
We do it with an S R O, our School Resource Officer, we share, we share the time, we share the expenses the way they are appropriately shared, and there should be no one reason we can't give them. I'm sure we could keep them fully busy in the city during the summer, without much of a problem, probably pertaining to school issues as well, but.
Right.
So.
There's always more work to be done.
And the amount of money that we pay to hire interpreters from A A L B, if we could use our own cultural reasons in those jobs, it would actually save the city.
That's from your reference point.
Right, that's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a fact of the matter.
And we have, we have to build capacity around those positions, so that those people don't get burned out doing all of that.
Right.
And we talked yesterday, we need to start building kind of programming for succession, so that we're training the next liaisons who can come up and be prepared for these positions, as we're able to increase the F T, or some of our liaisons become teachers, or other move into other fields, because there are not a lot of folks out there. We've been very fortunate to get Farida and our other homeschool liaisons who are incredibly talented, but there's not a deep pool of people who have those skills right now.
Right. I just wanted to finish up by saying, we, I just wanted to share out, we were featured as one of the five bright spots in this report on creating new futures for newcomers. Our newcomer programs at all three schools were featured as one of the five bright spots in the northeastern U S.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah. The author of this report came and did a three-day visit here last year, and it's available electronically as well, but I have copies, so you can take a look. There's features on Winuski, and one of the things that it talks about, it kind of talks about the eight promising practices of working with newcomers in U S school systems, and one of the biggest ones is liaisons. So they spent time interviewing our liaisons, and talking with our newcomer teachers, students, administrators. And yeah, so I just wanted to share that out.
I did want to add as well, from what you had mentioned, after we go through these, it's, it's been a long time since after the first liaison presentation that we had, that I very rarely get out of bed these days, without feeling very fortunate for being able to have breakfast, go to a job, come home, and eat. And we take that for granted, and we complain about with our mouth full. So it's, it's given me a different perspective, to say the least, so. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Greatly appreciated. Kirsten, we're going to keep seeing you, I suspect, right?
Oh, yes, I'll see you next month with Stevie and Ludo, who are our new Swahili and French liaison.
Nice. All right, very good. Next would be public comments. None. I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda with the noted change to the minutes in six A one, and a note also that will have the retreat minutes in November. So moved, Alex? All right, any other comment? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Pose? Very good, all right. Next, governance processes, meeting with legislators. We have Phil Maru and Debbie Ingram with us tonight. We very much love you guys to come up to the head of the table. Do you want to slide over here, and that way we can just create those last two, two chairs? Oh, just going to slide down, okay, thank you. So thank you again for taking time out of what I'm sure is a, is a busy schedule. We, just to give you a little preface, I tried to do it in my email as I, as I sent it out. We adopted policy governance some time ago. We've been probably in transition here for now seven years, eight years. You're never fully there anyway, but it's, it's a little bit different fashion of trying to govern. And to me, the simplest way I think about it is, we've moved from having a board that tries to run the school to having a board that tries to ensure that the school is run well. As part of that, we adopted a whole set of policies, and one of those policies is to do outreach where we believe outreach is needed. We've had the local colleges in to try to find out from them what it took to, what it means to them to have schools college-ready. We've reached out to local businesses and asked them what it means to them when our students walk in, what characteristics do they like to see, what do they need to see? Real briefly, interestingly enough, from the colleges that came in, curriculum and actual academic work came in third or fourth. It was working with others, problem solving, grit. How do you, how do you test kids when you, when you give them something really hard to do and have them pursue it? And then it was academics. And when we did the job, it ended up being almost exactly the same thing, except work skills were fourth rather than, you know, education piece. So from February to get a group in, I can certainly appreciate the fact that February is a really bad time to try to steal some of the nights that you have at random. So this year, we tried to move that into October to give you time before the session. And real, from the, from the top of what I'm looking for for tonight, and I think what we really need to do is, we didn't ask you here to change your position, we didn't ask you here to defend your position, we didn't ask you here to, you know, develop anything new. We really want to be able to express our needs, wants, wishes, and, and get some of your perspective on some of these same issues, on where can we advocate best? What is our best path? I'm a little disappointed in the list that I sent out. I am very happy to have the two of you here. I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have a little more, but I think we got the best anyway, so.
Chair of the Senate Education Committee.
You know, what else, what else do you need, right? But I think, you know, it's just the, the others, others have different perspectives as well in that, but I, I understand time as well, so I'm not going to, I certainly won't dwell on that. So with that, I, we had tried to seed the, the original email with some questions, just to give you some kind of an idea, and I thought we would start with going down through some of those and take the tangents wherever the tangents go, but try to be mindful of your time as well as ours, so. Just one second to go round those back up, because I got here just at the last minute.
Just to kill time and space, I'm going to echo Mike's comments and say, thank you for coming.
Sure.
This is more of a discussion, more than anything, to hear different perspectives on where we are, and you know. So thank you. And now that, I hope that killed enough.
You did, you done good. You covered for each other long enough, you're good for that. So the, and these are really in no particular order, they just happened to be the list in the way that I got them out the night we had the meeting, and the meeting happened to be part of the Capitol Project conversations that we were having that night, so the, the first one was, I know there's been some effort into reinstating the school, school reconstruction update, some funding for that. I know it was in some time ago. I, I've, I've gotten three calls from three different districts after we passed our bond vote in Winuski, asking the things we went through, and, and the comments were the same from all of them. There were a couple from down south, and one, one locally here. And, and the comments were kind of all the same, our buildings are, are old, they've been here since the fifties, and I think that's pretty much exactly what we're, we're looking at. So I just, your, your thoughts on where that's going, and where you, where you think that might go as we go?
So, people commonly, in the State House at least, talk about a moratorium on school funding. And there was never really a law passed creating a moratorium. It's really a more of an understanding or a tradition now in the House and the Senate Institutions Committees that they don't do that anymore. So, going back 10 years or whatever. So, I became Chair of Senate Ed three years ago. And there was a meeting at an architectural firm in Burlington on this issue. And that happened right before the start of that session three years ago. So back then, I started investigating why that is the way it is. Clearly, if you're someone who wants to hold property taxes to the absolute minimum, you tend to favor moratoriums on this sort of help with bonding and other things. Looking back at the history, that's sort of what I found, is that under the, I want to say under the Douglas administration, this comes into being. When Governor Shumlin comes in, he maintains it, as do the two committees. With that said, Senate Institutions has turned over. And now there's a guy named Joe Benning who's running it from the Northeast Kingdom, someone I have a very good relationship with. So I started working with him last year on thinking about what, what is, as you might guess, what's frightening to the people running the budgets? And to the administration, is the idea that we would lift the moratorium across the board? Because, you know, Flynn Elementary in Burlington was built probably right around when this was built. It needs to be leveled and replaced. Burlington High School, we just passed a really huge bond, but that's a, it's a, you know, rearranging the decks on the Titanic. That needs to be leveled and replaced. Right now, it's almost in danger of losing its accreditation because it's not considered a 21st century building. So with that said, I started thinking about two different avenues to approach. One would be follow-on from Act 46. Saying if you consolidated districts and you now have a need for a new building, can the state be in the business of helping you? Given that you were, you know, brought along in a mandatory way to consolidate. So there's some interest in that. The other, the other thing that I want to do, and when I, when I advocate along these lines, I always have Burlington and Winuski top of mind. And that is, if you are communities with high English language learner populations, high free and reduced lunch populations. And you need, as an outgrowth of those, you need help with bonding or, or school construction funding, can you get help too? So what I'm trying to do is pursue a limited lifting of the moratorium. So the moratorium would be lifted under very targeted circumstances. There'd have to be, as there is now, an application process. But the way it is now, as you might know, you can apply for that funding, but it's just always denied. So this would come along with it, hopefully, a target that we would be looking to spend to get us back in the business of replacing our schools. So that's as specific as I can be. The House went further with testimony last year. They're actually in the process of putting together a record that will allow them to act on legislation. So I think the path that I see is that the House passes something. Hopefully, we will have greased the skids with the Senate Institutions Committee. And we can have that be an institution's budget item rather than a education fund budget item.
Citizens and school boards, like, is it a letter-writing campaign for us? Is it testimonies from the school board to talk about? Is it, you know, Mike and I will be more than happy to redo our school tour, why we, how we got the, you know, bonding of the vote passed, you know? Because I know that we have the passion to talk, like, what will help sway the Senate to kind of move forward on this?
I hate to say it, but, you know, the, the Senate is, is a very personality-driven institution, there's only 30 senators. So when it comes to institution, the Chair and the Vice Chair of that committee pretty much make most of the decisions along with their counterparts in the House. So a letter-writing campaign that is targeted to the committee, or even to the Chair and the Vice Chair, you know, if they receive. There was a campaign being run, I think maybe it was the NEA, it's hard to tell where it was coming from. But I was getting letters all through the last session, postcards and letters about reconstruction and bonding and the need for state aid in those cases, so.
Without an obvious source?
Well, they came from individual districts, but clearly somebody was, you know, Nicole Mace perhaps, you know, Jeff Vannan, who, who knows? It happened to be a campaign I was very much in sync with, so I was glad to have it coming out, but that's the sort of thing I mean. It's, it's really about convincing three out of five people on one committee. Debbie, you want to add anything on?
Well, I was just kind of thinking to myself, Senator Maruus and I haven't had a chance to, you know, talk about these ideas. But a couple of things I was thinking would be worth exploring is, one, you know, there seems to be a will to find funding for safety. You know, improving safety in, in schools. So if we could somehow tie some of the reconstruction needs to, you know, to that.
No, that's not that hard. Quite easy check.
Yeah, I think that would maybe fly better, you know, with not only the legislature, but certainly with the governor, you know, as well. So that's just an idea that I throw out. And then, you know, I mean, I think in the same way that the federal government and state governments have these, you know, setups where they're, where they're matching funds. I wonder if that might be something also that we might be able to convince our colleagues to take a look at. If there were, you know, some bonding at the local level and then asking the state to, you know, to match, to match it. So that would at least reduce your, the amount that you'd have to raise. And then you get, you know, supplemented by, by the state. So those are just two ideas that I can throw out.
And, and the other thing is that I, I really believe we've got a good opportunity right now. Governor Scott, as Debbie said, the last two years, he's green-lighted, I think it's a total of $5 million for sort of shovel-ready security upgrades. Themed around protecting schools from active shooters among other things. So, so there, there has been a willingness to find $5 million. I don't think we're going to get another tranche of that kind of money. But it shows that there was $5 million over the last two years to be found for schools. And so what I would like as a, as a starter to say is, can we make that an ongoing thing? Where we're, where we're going to create a, an item in the budget where schools within this targeted group or groups can apply for that money.
I think one of the, one of the challenges there as well is, you, you mentioned it right up front, and that is, a lot of school boards trying to keep their taxes low.
Yes.
That's pretty, I was going to say, easy to do, but the consequences long-term obviously are there. You run things down, right now, I mean, we have a heavy rain and people start running for the buckets first and looking for the other things after.
Yeah.
But I got to believe that that's pretty much around the state for, for the older buildings that we have. And it's only going to get worse, and you know, it's like, how long do you kick the can down the road before we can do something with it?
My editorial comment on that is, I believe honestly, if you use the property tax, this is what you get. You get deferred maintenance into perpetuity. Because elected officials, and Debbie and I, and you, we all know how it works, you want to have a lean budget to take out to your voters. You know, you, as a board, you develop, I would, I did two terms on the Burlington School Board. And we developed very, you know, flinty budgets that we could take out and pass. But is that the way you really want to run education in the 21st century? I don't know which you replace it with, you know, if there was a magic bullet, other states would be doing it too. But I, I think we're about getting to the point where that's evident. It's also evident to me that the property tax as a way to fund education creates pervasive demonization of teachers and schools. That's not good, and, and you all face that too. So, we've kicked around different ideas for funding. It's just that it's a massive expense and, you know, no one's, no one's quite figured it out.
And, and part of me, looking at some of the, you know, some of the arguments that I made when trying to pass this school bond vote is that making quick replacements of systems that are quite failing are actually more costly on that level. And I don't know what we can do to prove, like, whether it's another study that we can help look at. But even here in Winuski, a water pipe breaks, right?
Yeah.
We cut, cut down school days, two days, or I can't remember, three days.
Five days.
Five days. The cost of replacing that water pipe is a lot more expensive than anything that we actually saved up in our deferred maintenance.
Right.
Right? And, and all we get was like that water pipe, right? If one of our heating systems breaks down, it's going to cost three times, four times as more. I mean, I think we got those kind of cost estimates. Is that information that we can feed in? Because if we're paying more on like, emergency fixes, that means that is less money that is going to our education, really the educational needs. Because all we're doing is trying to Band-Aid up our buildings.
I hate to say it, but it's like healthcare. If, if you rely on the emergency room, you're paying premium price, in fact, more than premium price. I, I will say, when I was on the board in Burlington, we were sitting around and, and just as I was about to go off the board. We were sort of talking about deferred maintenance and how we were going about it wrong, because we were only spending a little bit. We were doing whatever came, the top two items, we'd do those the next year and then the top two and so on. So I got off the board, the next year, they decided, we're going to make a dramatic shift. We're going to, we're going to cost out everything on our deferred maintenance list, just so everybody knows. And the headline was Burlington School Board considers $250 million repair bill. And I've never seen an explosion of anger like that. Because people assumed that we were going to come to them with and ask for $250 million, when in fact, it was just educational. We just wanted to say, this is what's, you know, what, what our problem is. But the misinformation that went out based on just that one estimate took two years to go away.
I'd like to continue moving on, we got a lot, no, 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 that's fine. But I just want to make sure we touch each of these because they were important when we, when we did them. The next one was early childhood requirements. And one of the conversations that we had was, a lot of the early childhood education is now being done outside of the school. They are, though, required to be trained to a certain degree, they are not the professional, professionally-trained staff nor professionally-paid staff. So it's, it's turning over, so the comments there were trying to figure out a way to get livable wages to the external providers so that we have, A, some consistency, and, and folks actually wanting to go into that as a career path that they could actually live on.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's a requirement. So just thoughts on paths there, or any conversations been had?
Yeah, well, we, we did pass a big bill that covers childcare and early, and early childhood education, basically, that provides some incentives to, for people to, to go into that profession. And, and in terms of paying for tuition, partly paying for tuition. And incentives to centers to try to pay, pay more to workers. And it also increases the subsidies that go to, to parents. So we, we did, we haven't seen.
Seven million?
Yeah, it was seven, seven million altogether, yeah, that we spent on it. So, I mean, it's a little early to see, you know, the effects of that, but, you know, we're, that was actually, I'm also on Health and Welfare. So that actually, actually came out of, out of our committee.
And the, the continuum, so early ed becomes pre-K and, and so on. We're going to be looking systemically at pre-K this coming session. Right now, and I think it's hard to imagine it changing, but it's a mixed-delivery system with private providers and, and public schools providing programs. None of them making what they should make. But I think public schools in general offer a better employment situation. They tend to scoop up the qualified providers. Private practices have a hard time. And there was a, there was a regulation being floated to require a licensed teacher in every classroom, not just one for each program. So we've been wrestling with those questions, how do you create parity between private and public programs? How do you make sure they're all earning, if not a livable wage, then a wage they can live on? So in other words, not $17 an hour, but, you know, $12 an hour, $14 an hour. Because there are providers in the Northeast Kingdom, for instance, they've come in to testify that they have to, they have to quit because basically they would need to be on food stamps to keep that job. So we are very aware of, of that. One way theoretically to do it would be to tax the Ed Fund for either more hours or increased recompense for programs for what they're providing. That takes us back to the initial question about property tax. If I had to, you know, look in a crystal ball, I would say that if we do pass a systematic fix of pre-K this coming year, there will probably be money attached. But it would be on the order of what we talked about with the bill last year. Numbers that sound big, millions of dollars, but when you spread it over the, the programs and you go forward, does it really materially solve that problem?
And one of the things that we've done, just to wrap this back to our first and the reconstruction and the reorganization of the space that we have is to make more room for the, the early childhood and the pre-K in order to make sure that a lot of our children, as, they, they need the social piece. They need the environment with the professionally-trained folks as well. So that's one of the things that we're trying to wrap in there too, to bring more of those kids in, where that we know they're going to get good quality education as well. Anything else on the?
One thing on that, just, I think what would be helpful to the field around pre-K is for the Senate-House Ed Committees to, to practice some oversight with the Agency of Ed and Human Services and ask them for some reports about how they are working together to support the field and manage. Because there's a lot of confusion that we hear in the field from our early learning coordinators. And they're trying to do some creative things regionally to minimize costs. But when they have to run around to both agencies and everybody's kind of doing this and doesn't know who has actual authority to make decisions for what, it's exhausting.
Just a quick story along those lines. So going back two years when Rebecca Holcomb was Secretary of AOE, Algo Bay was running Human Services. They had a year's worth of meetings and they hammered out language that got rid of the dual regulatory structure. Essentially, it put AOE in charge of pre-K and whether it was a private or a public program. And so they agreed on that. We could not agree with our House counterparts and the bill died. So, beginning of last year, I reintroduced the language, now we had Secretary French. And same language that had been agreed upon, I went to both of them and I said, can you still both agree on this? They both said yes. So I introduced the bill, came in committee, Secretary French came in, said, yes, this looks great. Algo Bay sent someone in to say he no longer supported giving up that authority. And they moved back to, both of them believing that their agency should have.
And that is the ripple effect we feel in the field all the time. So that's why I think it would be, you know, and more broadly speaking, the, the concept of oversight, it's something that we've been talking about a lot as superintendent. the, the concept of oversight, it's something that we've been talking about a lot as superintendents. We had this, um, uh, tidal wave of educational, um, statutes, right? Really important stuff, 166, 46, 77, now 173. Um, and I think just continuing to kind of push on the oversight from the agencies that are, that are involved in those to ask for continued updates and reports around, you know, what progress they're making and what are they struggling with, you know? Because the field is certainly well, uh, open to kind of trying to help with that.
Yep.
But it, it just feels like, um, there's not a coordinated effort right now and it's, uh, there's a lot of confusion.
Yeah.
And inefficiency.
I don't know if it seemed this way to you, but we deliberately last time did not pass big systemic changes to the system. Instead, we, we kidded around a lot that we were the committee of multiple delays. Because we wound up, and, and I believe this is directly tied to an understaffing at AOE. We wound up delaying, uh, implementation of certain parts of 173, implementation of, uh, you know, the chart string system, um, or the chart of accounts system. Uh, there was much discussion of a delay of Act 46. But essentially AOE, um, you go to find someone there, for instance, on the special ed front, their whole special ed team is gone. So they're reconstituting, uh, what was a very small team, but very skilled. All of them left. They didn't rehire. Um, and that's just one example. So same in terms of pre-K or, uh, Act 46 is more or less done now. So that's good.
It's a whole string of questions down that leg. But we won't, we won't go into those because that's not ed-based. Um, next item, uh, any other, any other thoughts on the, on the early ed? Um, the special ed funding changes, can you just help us understand, um, directionally?
Yeah, sure.
That's a serious one for us as well.
So, um, broad brush, what we've done is to replace, uh, fee for service, I would say, where, you know, a reimbursement model with a census-based model. That is, uh, an equation that will take four to five years to develop. Where we figure out how much funding each district has historically needed up to that point. We create, uh, the census formula. And then that formula delivers you your, your money in terms of special ed. And you spend it according to federal law and state law. But you're not, you're not seeking reimbursement for individual services. So with that said, um, that census-based model is designed to produce a number that you will get, um, you'll get produced every year, an amount of money that the, the state gives to you to run your special ed program. Along with that comes significant loosening of the restrictions on that money. So, uh, and, um, I always feel weird saying I did something for particular communities. But I did this for, uh, my committee did it for Burlington and Winuski. So you will see there are five criteria now that you can spend the money. One of them is on English language learners. So if you want to hire, uh, tutors, um, reading tutors, um, English tutors, those can be paid for with those dollars. Now, that's something that Burlington had been asking for forever. Because like Winuski, they have, I mean, it was lovely to hear the, the, uh, presentation from the liaisons, right? But as you know, that's a fantastically expensive enterprise. The, the whole structure designed to bring in, um, new Americans and help them, help their families. It, it takes a lot of money and the federal government picks up almost none of it. So this was a way to say, instead of special needs, the rubric we built it around was students who struggle. So do they struggle with special needs? Yes. Do they struggle with 504 plans? Yes. Do they struggle with English language learner problems? Yes. Do they struggle with behavioral issues other than those? Yes. So it allows, uh, community like Winuski or a community like Burlington to significantly expand its use of those dollars for, uh, what I believe is a, an appropriate expense, but which hasn't been covered up till now. I believe, I believe that's next year.
Yeah, okay. Let me, let me stop you just briefly though. Because I'm, I'm now just, I think I'm trying to put things together that don't seem to fit.
Yep.
Um, the census model, if I understand it, understands how much we've spent on special education funding over the last, the past X number of years, starting at, at some point.
Yep.
And then it takes that number and it says, okay, you spent this much on your special ed funding over the past three years. We're going to give you that. We're going to loosen the restrictions so you can spend it how you want it.
Yep.
How am I supposed, how, how am I, how are we supposed to then as a district? If I've got the average amount of money, maybe 2% more or 3% more in a year, to take the money that we've spent on special ed funding over the past three years
Yep.
and use it for something other than special ed funding?
Two things. Two, two answers.
I heard the loosening of the restrictions.
Yep.
But if we're spending it?
Okay. So remember, we're, we're shifting away from a fee-for-service model, a reimbursement model. And the report we had done by UVM that this was based on strongly suggested that that model leads to overspending. Uh, and in fact, Vermont is one or two in the country in terms of what we spend per capita on special ed. They identified that, that model as a way to explain that. So theoretically, shifting the model should, should put some money back into the system. But over and above that, I'm, I'm with you. I'm skeptical of the idea that, because there's something federally called maintenance of effort. So you're not allowed literally to spend $1 less next year than you spent last year. You literally have to spend at least as many dollars as you spent last year where you contravene federal law. So under maintenance of effort, you can never spend less. What the census-based model does is it gives you the same dollars going forward. Now, my skepticism kicks in because I was on a school board. I know that special needs costs go like this.
Well, no, they do this within year to year. In general, they're going to go up, but we've seen two, $300,000 shifts in a year.
And, and you know, that's, uh, you can still get extraordinary reimbursement under the new system as you can under the, under the old system. But
Like Reconstruction Aid.
So what we, so what we, uh, what we, so in other words, my compromise in going forward with the census-based model was that I want to create a supplemental program that says, if in fact you have a spike, you're a small district who's only had two special needs kids, and then one year you have six. That's huge for you. That, that might create a 20% spike in your property tax, given the right circumstance. So I want to create a supplemental grant over and above the census-based grant that you could apply for as a district in that circumstance. So we talked about that when we did 173. We weren't quite there with it. So what we did was, along with the waiting study, which I'm happy to talk about, uh, as well.
Yeah, that's next.
Right. We put into that charge to the, to the waiting study committee that they address the commit, the, the question of whether there should be a supplemental grant. They're going to come back with those answers in December. And I've already got a bill in, uh, because I know how I feel about it. I want there to be a supplemental grant. Um, because I don't want there to be a situation where a district has spent all its money and then has great difficulty because special needs costs increased, you know, over and above that in a way they couldn't have anticipated.
One of the odd things I find with, uh, doing the budgeting is that the special ed data is taken from like October of this year to use for next year's. In your, in your case, where you mentioned, you know, I have two, uh, special ed kids and then I go to six and there's a special requirement. How about the thought of going the other way? I have six and you pay me for six and I now go down to two?
You mean, uh, in terms of the, of the, in terms of
Reimbursed or re?
Well, the, the, uh, the formula, the census-based formula is driven by the actual data. So, so the formula is what it is, but each year you plug in last year's data.
Right, right. I guess my point, my point was more, in, in your case, you said I had, I had two all along and then I have six. I'm saying I have six all along and now I go down to two.
Should the, should the state claw back?
So I just don't know if that is any kind of that. I mean, we don't, we're not going to have that because ours is, you know, big enough that one, two, three is probably not going to make that big a difference.
Yep.
And, and I'll leave it at that because that's just something that
I would say, don't even suggest that.
No.
Can I make up a few?
Yeah, please.
So one important point, I think, in 173 is that you must spend those dollars on special ed services first. So I love the spirit of the flexibility within it for struggling learners, so it, it's more broad. However, if you don't have any dollars left, then you're not going to meet those needs anyway.
Yep.
The, the modeling tool that we've been provided with and that we've, um, uh, started to put our money into or put our, our, our data into shows us that we would be getting less because we're a high spending, considered high spending in special ed. And that is because, uh, we have a higher than the state average percentage of students identified with disabilities. And we have a, uh, within that group, a preponderance of, um, uh, multiple disabilities and high needs, which are more expensive. So my concern is if there isn't a waiting component or the supplement that you've, you've talked about,
Yep.
we're going to end up, according to the modeling that we have, we're going to get less money. So we're going to have less money to serve the special needs students and which will mean we will not only have less to serve them and meet our legal requirements, we won't have anything to, to, uh, work with the struggling learners that you described.
Well, so the supplemental grant program that I'm talking about, I think could come into play in the circumstance you're talking about. In, in other words, you're, you're, you've got a kind of impacted situation where you're in two or three different ways, you're, you're serving populations that, um, would max out your census-based, uh, block grant very quickly. So to my mind, there has to be a failsafe. Um, that's the way I think about it. In that case, it has to trigger more funding from the state. Obviously, you, you can't spend less dollars according to the federal government. And you have to serve the, those special needs students according to their IEPs. There's no, no way around that.
Right.
So it does make sense to, to model around serving those needs first. I think in many cases it will leave some money, uh, with greater flexibility. If not, the supplemental program, I hope we'll get there. If I can jump to the waiting study?
Yeah.
So the waiting study again is something that's, um, been requested for years. We've put it in 173. I've met with the UVM researchers and they're working on it several times. Um, they do great work. Um, what I said to them was, they're, they were asked to consider several different, call them political asks. Um, so from places where they don't have English language learners, but they have a lot of rural area, they wanted a, a waiting added for rurality, which strikes me as, um, I don't want to say silly, but it, it strikes me as a fairly naked way of trying to drive funding to certain districts. It doesn't change somebody's educational needs that they come from a rural place. It does change somebody's educational needs and expenses if they are having to learn English, uh, once they get here. And it changes the district's needs and expenses. So along with rurality, there was also, um, a, a request that this committee consider, um, fallout from the opiate epidemic. Uh, ACES, um, different childhood trauma models. I, I don't think myself that there's any possible way that you could change the waiting formula to, to include those things. So long story short, my belief is that, that this group of researchers will recommend a slight increase in the waiting formula for ELL learners and probably, uh, free and reduced lunch populations as well. If that turns out to be the case, based on that report, I think we can get that through both chambers. But the politics are such that when Debbie and I go forward, the minute we say, uh, that we want to change the waiting formula, everybody knows that it's a zero-sum game. If, uh, Burlington and Winuski get a little more in the formula, the taxes elsewhere go up to account for that. Or at least partially. So it becomes a pitched battle. But it's one that I think is winnable, assuming the study comes out the way we want.
And hence advocacy in that point will definitely pay dividends.
Absolutely. And, and just, um, I'm not sure if anybody here knows, but going back two years ago, I brought, uh, Senate Education to Winuski. And we met with a lot of different people, uh, the principal at the time. And, um, and we closed the day standing in the, in the atrium.
The main lobby.
Not the, the main lobby. And I wanted my committee members, three of whom were from the Northeast Kingdom or southern parts of the state that have very homogeneous populations. I wanted them to understand what it's like. You know, my daughters have gone through the Burlington School System. In their auditorium are 45 flags. And there are, you know, 60 languages spoken in Burlington Schools, Winuski Schools. And these people were absolutely stunned because they knew intellectually that there were places in Vermont that were highly diverse. But they didn't understand the needs, the financial needs, until they saw the people streaming through the halls. And then they understood what a task you guys do. So, um, I may do it again, but I, I did it once. I think our committee's a little more, um, uh, knowing now than they were back then.
Yeah, except for maybe two of them. Not to mention any names.
Alex and Diggerberg.
We've done that. Um, anything?
No. I, I met with Professor Colby a couple of times at UVM about the waiting study. So I'm, I'm really anxious to, to, to see the reports and, and I hope, I hope you're right.
Yeah, yeah. Well, fingers crossed on all these things, you know?
Then, um, so yeah, and I will, I will argue, I think that the ELL waiting, whatever it comes out, is probably just slightly less than what is really needed. But that'll be, in the right direction will be helpful for sure. And then, um, healthcare, moving up to the state level. I know the negotiations are, are working through there.
I'm going to toss that one to Debbie.
Well, so I understand that in the middle of negotiations, you a lot of times don't have any idea what's going to, to go through. But I, I guess from my perspective.
Oh, you mean statewide healthcare?
Statewide healthcare for teachers.
Yeah.
That I do know.
That you don't.
Um, so I, you know, I, I would ask, um, thoughts on the overall balance as it goes through? And, and what that means across the state? Your thoughts?
I'll take a whack at it.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Okay. So, um, I've been getting updates from the NEA and the school boards primarily. Um, they, I don't, I don't want to make it seem like they're singing from one hymnal. They, they each think the other side is being unfair. Um, but
Good negotiations.
They seem to agree that there's going to be a resolution by the ultimate deadline in the statute.
Which is?
I believe it's December. Um, for, oh, what's that?
Yes, December. Yes.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Well, that, that comes into the last item here. We'll get to that in a minute.
And, uh, so I, I think it will be an arbitrator picking, um,
They have to pick one or the other, as I understand it.
Yes, yes. NEA wanted to change that so that the arbitrator would have the ability to mix and match. I think that's dangerous, uh, because you know very well.
Polar opposites and go to the middle.
Yeah, having, having an outsider at the last minute say, oh, why not just throw these together? Doesn't seem like smart work. Um, so I do think there'll be a resolution. And I think that the process, once they got done with their fights about how many people were going to be in the room and other things, if that happens, it will have worked well enough. But I've promised both sides if that happens, it will have worked well enough. But I've promised both sides that we will have them in and if they feel the need, we'll start a vehicle moving to make changes to reduce stresses in the system as they found it going through. My one thing that I've maintained to them all along is that, that bill for statewide healthcare was agreed unanimously by all parties in the room. So, AFSMI, NEA, school boards, um, uh, all the labor people that were in the room, as well as the principals, um, everyone of all sides said, "Yes, we can, we can work with this." They all signed off on it. So, any changes, I would look for similar unanimity so that we don't start down the road of advantaging one side over the other.
And I understand that, that this being a, a first pass at this is gonna be very contentious.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's gotta be, just, just because of its very definition and the variability with what we have out there now.
And, and without going into it too much, at the same time, we rebalanced VHI. So, VHI is now evenly balanced. They had gotten out of balance for various reasons, depending on who you talk to. But they are now evenly balanced. I think they're having a harder time in their negotiations than, than the healthcare bargaining teams.
With the providers?
Uh, well, in terms of just what to offer, uh, out-of-pocket costs, uh, what, what the plan should look like, basically.
So, I got one on this and it's gonna tie to our last piece, um, that we had. Then I'll open it up for anything else. But, so, so assume, I'm assuming this is a multi-year deal, not just a single?
Statewide healthcare?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, supposed to be a two-year contract.
Okay, so, as we go forward, one of the struggles that we have from a budgeting perspective, I know this is gonna be, um, taken from the, from the, the state end, but in negotiations, changes in the healthcare are certainly gonna affect.
Yes.
Changes in the way and the, and the, the nature of the bargaining, uh, in the, in the individual districts. Timing of, of having those, the, the healthcare negotiations completed in relation to either our negotiating, uh, and/or our budgeting are gonna be key. So, if we end up with the healthcare, um, negotiations ending in, in March every year, then we start our negotiations every couple of years, depending on the length.
Well, I think it'll be, uh, December.
Yeah.
Right.
We did discuss that, yeah, yeah, we did talk about that.
So, there is a, there is a, an annual endpoint, so that we have an answer as we're in either negotiation or budgeting.
December's the drop-dead, um, date. I say drop-dead, but, you know, whenever you're talking about collective bargaining, there's the possibility of s- strike, even though, um, I, I don't believe in this case that would be, that would ever be.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with that, but if I, if one of the last items we have in our agenda tonight is our budget timeline and when we, when we do things, and it's December 2nd, 9th, 16th, uh, 23rd, God forbid, we don't need that one, and then the first week of January.
Yep.
And if negotiations for this are done in, uh, just late, late December, we're gonna end up in a situation, negotiation years, where we're gonna end up putting the budget together, finalizing the budget and contin-, you know, then having the negotiations carry over because we can't really start until we know where the healthcare is gonna be from there out.
It's a good, it's a good point. If, I said that we would ask both sides about places where the process rubbed raw and we would look at fixing them. If you have suggestions on timing.
I'd love to see September as an endpoint. So, if you're done, we have the data.
Yep.
And if you're not done, there's time for, for, um, the, the flexibility of the...
Yeah, I think now it commences in April and then it allows, uh, what's that?
Too much.
Eight months?
Too much time.
Although when you...
You allow eight, you're gonna take eight. You allow four, you're gonna take five.
Yeah.
I, I suppose.
So...
Um, their, their argument was that they're, they're used to a much longer timeline in some cases. So, but fair enough, if...
Talk faster, be terse.
If it could be, uh, you know, October 1st. Um, so, I'll keep that in mind.
That would, that would help a great deal. And again, anytime I get a deadline, I'm gonna expand the time it takes me to do the work to the timeline that I'm given, so...
And honestly, they, they argued for two months this summer about how many people should be in the room.
And now they're all done with that. Next time you start there and you're, you know, you lose those two months of haggling.
Maybe we could, we could say, "Okay, clearly you don't need all, all eight months."
Right. Yeah, I, I, that, that to me is, is ridiculous because you're just gonna take the time. It, it, along those same lines, then, as we work through our budgets, we have a lot of, um, and, and this is nothing new, I'm sure, to you guys is, we have a lot of pieces of data that we need in order to finalize what does the, what is the impact of what our decisions are, ultimately on a tax rate we're gonna have and, and on our budget. So, you know, equalize pupils, count the eyeballs, divide by two and apply a factor. But it doesn't come until really late. You mentioned agency of ed. You look around, there's nothing but empty offices right now.
Yeah.
Um, understand that, again, other issues there, but, you know, how do we get that data in a timely fashion? CLA?
Yeah.
That's math. I don't know what the data is that we're waiting for, but we always wait right until the last minute to get the data.
And actually, there are two or three data points that the agency wasn't able to come up with this year, because they, they just admitted that they didn't have the personnel to do it. So, I've pushed on that every way that I can, including, I had a one-on-one with the governor where the only thing we talked about was understaffing at AOE. And I said to him, as, he's a very nice guy, and, and I, I said, um, "I understand that keeping school costs, property taxes down is a, is a key point for you, but at this point, it's nickel and diming the agency to the point where individual districts are missing grant opportunities because they don't have the data that the federal government requires." So, it's, it's penny wise and pound, pound foolish, as is the, you know, huge deferred maintenance that we've got going on. So, he was receptive and Secretary French has since hired a couple of people, mostly in special ed. But what I worry about is that they're gonna stop there and, um, Dan French's answer to everything is a software package. You know, there's always a software package that'll do this, that, and the other thing. And I'm like, you know, they haven't figured out a software package yet that can deal with, you know, cranky, cranky, uh, people of all sorts that can take Act 46 and make it happen. That, that happened because they put four really good people on, on that project. And it took all the manpower they had, pretty much.
Here's a question, you know, thinking creatively, because we can keep on banging our head against this and the definition of these things that we use.
Yeah.
Arguing for the same thing and expecting a different result, right? Like, what's the downside of, um, having a lag of a year on the CLL, CLA? Like, you know, is, is it gonna affect the budgets that much? Does it hurt, you know?
Using last year's data for next year's budget, being one year...
I mean, we already see this happening at the federal level with, um, FISA data forms for financial aid, right?
Yeah.
Like, I, I, I think in some ways, like, I, I've been on the school board for now three years and I think Mike has complained about this every, you know, annual budget and...
Some of us are just cranky.
And he is cranky. And so, at some point now, I'm starting to think, "Okay, so what are alternative solutions that help do this?"
Yeah.
You know? And are we thinking about that? And is there stuff that we can think about, to think of creative solutions that help? Because in the long run, it is, I, I do not know how to go to my community, go argue a budget and say that we increased our budget seven percent one year and it decreased our tax rate one percent. The following year, I go up to the budget and say, like, "We increased our budget by like five percent, but our tax rate increased ten percent."
Right.
There's no correlation between our spending and the district and the tax rate.
Yeah, I understand. It's...
That's gone.
We, we hear that all the time.
Well, I would, I would argue that you, that you all are put in a really difficult position because with a governor's term of two years, priorities change.
Yes.
Priorities aren't clear in the first year, I would say. Then they are for the second year and then the governor is outrunning for another term. And, you know, and then the, so, I, I feel like the system is set up for short-term policymaking, which is really hard. And, and I know that that is a controversial issue and it gets legs every once in a while, but I would really encourage the legislator, legislature to think about, what are the conditions that make up our policymaking and our government, the foundations of it? And is it set up for us to be able to do the job of looking twenty-five years out and planning for a state that, that is, has a lot of challenges right now, uh, and in the future? Or are we kind of continuing to, to do the shorter-term policy and thinking, uh, just because it's set up that way for us?
Yeah, the two-year term, there, there is discussion, as there always is, about changing it to four years for the governor. I tend to think it won't go anywhere. Um, to go back to the CLA, it's, you know, again, I, I hate to be a, a doomsayer about it, but it's set up to create problems. I mean, it doesn't take a genius to figure out, you got people on fixed incomes, but they happen to live in a town where the property values are going up. Great, you know, they've got fake money in their house, right? Because they're not gonna move. Um, so their house is now worth fifty thousand dollars more, but they're never gonna access that fifty thousand dollars of increased value unless, I suppose, unless they took a home equity loan or something. But they're gonna pay higher property taxes based on the increased imaginary wealth that they have. And so, you wind up with people who are squeezed, then they start voting the budget down.
Right.
Across the board. And it's, it's not a rational process.
It's not rational. So, I mean, like I said, in hoping this discussion here, you know, you can help us educate so that we can talk that help drives the policy, right? Like, once again, I started off saying that this is the discussion. I don't mean for us to grill you with questions, but like, how do we think collectively as a community to help explain? Because you're right.
Yeah.
In some sense, CLL is basically saying your property is going up, which is great in a lot of minds, but it is fake money.
Yeah.
Right? And we should all be happy that our property values are going up, but how do we control the cost so that we can also keep the citizens of Vermont in the areas that they grew up in?
I've, I've always, you know, this, this going far afield, but I've always thought, governors typically refuse to consider switching to the income tax to, to fund schools. I've always thought if we went to the income tax for schools the way we do for other things, you wouldn't be demonizing schools and teachers. It would, you might be demonizing government writ large, but you wouldn't be singling out because that's the one, the one part of your taxes that you know where it goes to. And even though everything else is going up at the same rate, schools draw all your, all your ire. So, you know, if we had a, a formula where maybe we use property tax for the non-residential still and then we move to the income tax, problems with volatility in people's, uh, incomes, et cetera. But I, I think that might ultimately be the way that we, that we have to think about because otherwise, I, I just don't see a way out of these structural problems created by the property tax.
Yeah, that, that's my point, is I don't think the system's set up to allow you to do that.
Right, it's, you know, Act 60 was a huge wound across the, the state.
Well, I, I would say, though, I mean, when you're trying to interpret it to, you know, the public, I, you know, I think people forget about, there is great income sensitivity built into the property tax, you know? And often when I talk to people, they don't, I, they don't seem to be aware or they don't quite, you know, they don't see how that, how that affects them. And, you know, so, so it is actually, up to a certain point, it is actually more of an income tax than a property tax because it is based on people's income. And, and I think, I, I mean, I do think we are probably headed towards making some changes and, and maybe making it, um, uh, an income tax-based, uh, system. But in the meantime, I think, you know, just in terms of helping people understand it, we need to stress that, that there is income sensitivity.
I gotta hit, I gotta hit, I gotta hit the, go ahead, finish, finish first.
Mike and I definitely talk about that a lot when we present the budget.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, this is one of those harder points where like, when people are only looking for one number.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Right? And so, I, I'm looking for ways of how do we work together from a government and city, you know, school board? How do we help educate our citizenship to understand this, to make, and help them understand some of the structure barriers, right? It's really now at a level of education. And that's, you know, at that moment, so...
Though Alex and I will always disagree on my belief that, uh, reading is probably the utmost importance. Math will come if you can read. We'll get to that decision later. But one of the things that I would like to know is who can tell me how to explain the income sensitivity piece to the community? I've got some of the basics. I've dug as, almost as deep as I can. The one piece that I find hard to find is that incomes under, I think it's ninety-nine thousand, the tax is based on income. Unless, I think there's a component of home value in there, if the home value is above a certain amount. Two-twenty-five, maybe?
Yeah, I can't remember what it is exactly.
And I'm running into problems because exactly to your point, we've got a lot of folks that are living in houses where their income is relatively low, but their house value goes over that. And then we hit them with this, "If your income, if your household income is under ninety-nine thousand, it's gonna be based on your income." Well, it's not because there's a component I can't figure out underneath there. What is that number and is it at the appropriate level or has it been there for a long time and does it need to go up?
So, Brad James at AOE?
Who else can I look to?
You mean other than Brad?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I was, I was beginning to tell a story about Brad James. So...
Oh, okay.
Brad James at AOE, um, I was gonna do a town hall in Burlington on just this thing. And I said, "Can you give me a one-page, not front and back, but one-page description of how school funding works?" And he said, "No." And, and I, I said, "Okay, front and back, can you do it?" And he said, "I'll try." So, working for several weeks, he produced something that was three pages. And it's, trying to work through one single problem of how, how you would figure out one person or one district's, um, taxes was just phenomenally complex.
Like, I'm gathering that.
And Brad can explain it. Like, I've, I was at a couple of forums for Act 46 and Tax Spikes and explanations to communities under Rebecca Holcomb. And I've seen Brad do it, but it's about a forty-five-minute presentation. And at the end of it, I guarantee you, nobody understands.
Well, that was, that was where my question was.
Well, so, so I actually, I'm, I'm a big fan of, uh, Public Assets Institute, which is a nonprofit, uh, that analyzes the Vermont budget from the point of view of everyday citizens and how, and how fiscal policy affects, uh, real people. And Paul Cilow is the name of the, the, uh, executive director. And I always, I'm a big champion for, for them making things, uh, understandable. I often go to...
What was the organization again?
Uh, Public Assets Institute.
And his name is Cilow, C-I-L-L-O.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Great. All right. Um, I know we've stretched you right to probably the limit that we had expected. Um, any other?
I apologize. I'm gonna put my student trustees on the spot. And I'll buy you dinner if I've, if made you feel awkward at some point. But, I mean, here's an offer. I, I just wanna give our student trustees an offer. I just wanna give the, my, our student trustees an o- opportunity to ask.
Sure.
Two senators who are in the education, like, any question that you wanna ask, like, go for it. They brought them here and you're the voice of our students. And then I would also like to return the favor if you have questions for us, um, to really make it fair so that we're not totally just grilling yet. And you can ask our questions as they're thinking about their questions to you.
Okay, so, um, I do have a question. So, I, I come at this from a, from a place of love, not, not critique. But I'm remembering a time, a couple of years ago, we looked at graduation rates. And if you look at graduation rates in the state, Winuski was at the bottom. And I've been through this system many times. I understand the challenges of that. So, I have explained it to people why that, that is the case. And if you take a six or an eight-year cohort, you guys do an amazing job of bringing people through that's not captured in the normal graduation rate. My question for you is, I would like to get money for the Winuski system. My question for you is, I would like to get money for the Winuski system based on that statistic. But I have stopped because I don't want to seem as though I am embarrassing the system, or as though I'm fostering a negative impression of you. I I honestly believe that you need more dollars to change that statistic. So I'm wondering if anybody has any ideas? Because honestly, I don't think other districts need the money in terms of what the problems they're having graduating students to the extent that Winuski does. So I heard you saying, uh, in in a wonderful way, how do we help that woman, uh, with her tuition to get her degree? I'm I'm thinking about from the graduation rate on through to trying to matriculate at CCV or or wherever, do you have ideas that I could put forward specifically on Winuski's behalf to address the graduation rate?
It all goes back for me, because I, with the students, obviously, a lot of the students have trouble graduating because mainly the language. Uh, we have a lot of, and newcomers, so not many people, um, speak English, and a lot of people come in starting here, their freshman year, and they have to work their way up in the GPs and GXs, which is really, really hard for students who speak English to do that, to get their special communication capstone. Or, um, uh, the critical thinking capstone, so. I think if we, like, invest a lot of attention and time to help students learn English, and I think this goes beyond just school. For me, I learned English not just from school, I had to put a lot of work outside of school. School was not enough. Um, so I needed a lot of support from tutors, and I was grateful to, um, find something called Silven. Have you ever heard of Silven?
Yes, sure.
Silven is amazing. It it used to be funded by the school, it's not anymore. I think we should bring that back. Silven really, really helped me with English, math, and everything. I came in my fifth, my fifth grade year, during my sixth grade year, I was a a level above in English than my sixth grade year, because of Silven. Um, and another thing I had in mind was, I forgot.
That's okay, while you think about that, you're to, just to your point, just in perspective, that the young lady that was doing the, that is the liaison for the Burmese, the the Karen and, uh, she came here at fifteen, knowing no English, and got poor grades in her first year. Twelve years later, she's now the liaison, working back with the communication. Whether she did it in the other three years, I I don't know. I I'm not sure, I mean, she graduated my daughter, so I'm assuming that that she did it in the other three years, she put it all together. But there's that, as as Eva mentioned, it it's getting that start. And and one of the things we focused on is retention, not graduation in four years, it's retention for five and six. So some of the, somehow in that retention, I'm not sure exactly how we can, you know.
We we do capture the six-year graduation rate.
We do.
So we have the date of the six-year graduate, but I would also encourage you, just because you're right.
Yep.
You've gotta mix the story and the anecdotal or qualitative work with the numbers. And I'm gonna tell you that, um, because we strategically realized that we needed to tell Winuski's story better, that our hiring of the communication, and and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say, it's, I I put too much burden on Usama, on this story that he has, and and reading his story, and if we can send you the link so that you can read the story of how he graduated, um, I don't know, at what, how he, what age, but he came in late, worked hard, is the work, got his community college degree, he's now thinking about going to UVM or Ver- Vermont Tech. But those are the stories that, you know, when you read, you'll s- you start understanding why it's a six-year graduation rate and not necessarily a four, you know, um.
That's a good one to pass along.
And and I think two years ago about the student that like, you know, that we, you had a written, beautiful writtenly article, and it maybe might be Usama again, um, that was twenty-sixth that graduated from high school. And I don't remember the exact numbers. But if you're asking for that, I appreciate that you're coming in and asking us to help you interpret the numbers. We, that is definitely our specialty, we've looked at every ounce of numbers. But we also know how to mix the numbers with the qualitative stories so that people can start really understanding what the context of what those numbers mean. Eva, did you have something else that come back?
Uh, another thing, uh, for those who do miss the awards, there is not enough motivation to earn a card and finish high school, because a lot of students worry about scholarships. I think that's really good, I'm straight as far as.
Come talk to me after this.
Okay, please.
Scared of not getting them?
Yeah, uh, I I don't think I ca- I qualify for a lot of things, because we don't have a GPA. We are on graduation proficiency, like proficiency-based graduation. And also, um, it's just like, a lot of students, I don't know, we don't feel like we have enough resources or funding to help us, like, move on to college. So a lot of students just give up, and the options, a lot of the options that I hear in our school, the students don't really think about going to, like, good colleges. They're always like, oh, I'll just end up in CCV, which is, CCV is great, it's a good way to save money for the first two years of college, but you should always think about getting a four-year degree. And I don't know, like, how should I tell our students to get in that mindset and start working harder? And, um, help the ELL students to not feel unmotivated? And like, really motivate them, like, yes, you can learn English, and if you learn English, you can do everything else. And, one, sorry, one more thing, I noticed also, um, ELL students are automatically put in low math levels just because they don't have English, and I don't think that's right, because math is not English. I mean, you sometimes do need English to understand problems, but I think that's much easier to work with in math. So, I s- I I talked with a couple of students, um, one of them last year complained to me that she's still doing addition and subtraction in her ninth grade year, and she said that she already knows how to do that things, how can she move on and convince the teachers to let her move on? So that brings down the SAT scores, too, which we need to work.
Did you pay her for that plug, by the way?
I did not pay her, but.
But first, I just wanted to say thank you for your authenticity and actually bringing up these issues with us at the school board. This is exactly why we want student trustees on this board. And, um, I know that now that we know this a little bit more, like, we will work from a policy governance to figure out how to get that type of information out. I mean, I I don't know if you know, I work at UVM and I got lots of connections there, and we'll make sure that I get the director of admissions here, or the VP of enrollment, man, you know, I'm sneaking all these things through those upper administrators.
Never be afraid to take advantage.
Get me scholarships and you.
Yeah, well, well, and we talk, we'll talk and talk about how the fund, because I am worried about that, but I heard that message, and I didn't just hear it from you, I heard the message from our VP of Enrollment Management at 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 UVM, and she's like, no, we need to make sure that message is clear out in the schools, and we need to figure that out, so.
Yeah, that's why we gotta figure out how to get your resources out to everyone, because I think that people are just unmotivated, because they don't know what to do. Um, nobody's helping them, and, um, when the, I guess, like, when they do try to look for scholarships, they don't know how to apply, because nobody has taught them. Um, Upper Bound has helped us a lot, but like, it's not available to everyone. So, finding like, I I guess, like, because we're gonna have a new guidance teacher, maybe like, she can be in charge of something like this with newcomers.
And for Upper Bound, um, the newcomers can't really sign up for it, because, yeah, so. Um, I feel like if I came in my freshman year here, I could definitely do Upper Bound, because I have a lot of motivation to learn and, like, do well. So I think they should at least get a chance.
Do you have student advisories here?
We do, we do.
Does that help with, uh, people trying to access?
Not really, because, um, we do PLP in advisory, and PLP is, it's kinda good, but not that good. I feel like, I feel like we should pen- spend a little bit less time on PLP, more time on resources during advisory, and, um, why don't we talk about, like, hey, everybody in PLP, you're required to make a raise.me.com, uh, profile? And putting all your courses there so you can start getting scholarships.
I was laughing, cause my, I was talking to my daughter about her PL, her PLP, she's in ninth grade now. She said almost exactly the same thing, I said, how is it? And she goes, it's okay, but not really. And I I was like, so it turns out what they do a lot in their PLP sessions, in their advisories, is team building, and team building is eating pizza and playing games. And I was like, really? Did anybody talk to you about dual enrollment? Did anybody talk to you about early college cricket?
So Sophia's in early college.
Good.
Eva is, uh, at the tech center.
That's great.
Yep, so somehow you guys found out about those opportunities.
Yeah, that's.
So there are some supports. I think what I hear you saying is, how do we, how do we kind of systematize that so all students know about them? And they have peep adults who know them well and can motivate them to access those and believe that they can do them.
And and oddly enough, I don't know why it is, but there's a huge gem, gender imbalance in early college and and dual enrollment, where it's two-thirds plus women, and very few men take advantage of those programs, and I I don't know why that would be, but.
Motivation at that age.
I suppose.
Educational motivation at that age, at least speaking from my daughter.
Yeah.
Or my my kid's perspective.
Frontal lobe development.
I I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, to answer your question a little bit, Phil, going back to it is, um, so the ELL funding, the waiting, that would be immensely helpful.
Okay.
You know, to be able to have more money to apply, particularly to like, the newcomers that that Eva and Sophia were talking about, to get students to, uh, acquire English as quickly as possible so that they can, you know, move from that social language into that academic language, and and then, um, uh, towards their diploma. Another, uh, piece is that, as was already brought up, we did through school improvement, uh, grants. We were identified through the graduation rate with a low graduation rate. We did get some funds that are, uh, will be for three years, and we're, we approve, the board approved a guidance counselor, and they'll be focusing on kind of that grade eight, nine transition, and, um, actually working on raising those post-secondary aspirations, even the middle school up through early high school. So that's gonna be, um, part of the, uh, approach as well.
Well, our our first order of business is the waiting study and the supplemental grant program. So, we'll be spending January and half of February on that. So, hopefully I'll come back with good news, uh, in terms of that. What I'm hoping is that it doesn't, they don't recommend something that is in effect a wash, you know, a a ru- rise in ELL, but that directs funds elsewhere at the same time, and basically keeps everybody operating where they are now. So we should probably let you get to your rest of your meeting.
So greatly appreciated.
Thanks for being a champion of Winuski, too.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, Burlington and Winuski are one, in my mind, they're one for me. So, I'm always, I'm not necessarily advocating for your people, I'm advocating for my people.
So just, um, for a comment for next year, your positions, it, would that be the, I mean, tonight's discussion to me was deep enough and rich enough to understand, I I think you understood where, what we were talking about, I think we understand your challenges as well. Is there any reason for me to invite four or five other people just because they're from the area? Or is that just gonna be excess wasted time on other people's time?
Everybody's always got great stuff, I mean, we, uh, honestly, we have a fantastic delegation. The other senators would be, you know, value-added, no matter what you're talking about. What I would say is, um, if, again, if you put a, the institutions committee, Joe Benning is the chair, um, invite him to come in and and discuss the challenges that you're facing in terms of, you know, that what we began by talking about. It doesn't hurt to have him get it from all sides, that people need help with construction and bonding, and and that the absence of that is gonna be more expensive.
And is that a separate discussion than this one? Just to specifically focus the time?
If you get him here, uh, in fact, let's do it this way, if you wanna invite him and me, I'll I'll come and I'll I'll, uh, make sure that he, uh, doesn't avoid the question, and we'll, together, we'll grill.
Yeah, and again, I don't, I I wanna have people want to come back to have the discussion, so you understand better where we're coming from, and we understand better from yours. So I don't want it to end up being a contentious piece, I just wanna make sure we get the right people.
And he was one of the guys that I brought, uh, three years ago to Winuski. So, um, but an invitation to him and his, maybe his committee, probably only one of getting him, but that would be a good one.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, greatly appreciated.
Okay, um.
Oh, you do? Okay, thank you. All right, so, let's see if we can move down through this expeditiously here, so we can, uh, continue moving. So, board committee reorganization, I think this was an item on the annual agenda. But at this point, I think we've talked about this at the at the retreat, and also in March, so we've got the communication negotiation, um, I, anybody at any.
I have the list out, if I want me to read it, to see where people are.
Yeah, if you.
So we have communications and parent engagement, which appear to be two separate committees from the minutes from last March with Tori and Margaret, and I think there was discussion about maybe turning them into one, right?
There's one.
Um, then there's, uh, uh, Mike and Matt on negotiations, uh, and then there was Mike and Alex on the Capital Project Exec Committee, and then Tori and Alex were kind of sharing the charter committee participation with the city. They had, uh.
They wanted a representative from the board, and I haven't seen a whole lot with that.
I don't think much has happened with that, but it was, I wanted to keep everything on the plate, so people are aware of where their name lies. And the reason is, we need somebody on the fundraising committee. Uh, one or two board members to be a part of that. And as as, um, Emily talked about, you know, we will minimize and and be targeted as possible with your time, but it's very important to have, uh, at least one, probably two board members on that committee who can, you know, go out and, uh, not only be a part of committee, but also work on on some of the work with potential donors.
Kicking along. So Matt, we're talking about, uh, committees.
Mm-hmm.
All right, great.
Okay, and and obviously, I'm I'm more than willing to pitch in, kick in for specific, um, talks. I was a fundraising need, a need for board members to do fundraiser, to be a part of the fundraising for potentially going to donors and and some of the decisions Alex and and Margaret had had okay. You have any other concerns about the committees we have? I don't know that we have any, um, changes that we want. Alex, anything? Margaret, good with the way that was? Um, the fundraising, do we actually need to put that in place with a motion here, or?
No, they're assignments, so you don't have to.
It's an assignment, and it's not a quorum when they get there, so, okay. All right, perfect. Then, this, uh, so the student report, so we can potentially let you guys out of here as we finish this up, but if you guys wanna go ahead. That wasn't on the agenda, by the way, and so we've kinda added the student report, and we had it, it had missed it.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
So, club started, um, we have the yearbook club, who is in charge of making the yearbook. Uh, they started fundraising for the yearbook, uh, so far, they sold chocolate, and they're done actually this week. Uh, we have the prom committee, um, so they're working really hard to make a prom happen this year again. They also are working on fundraising currently, they were selling coupon books this week. And there is Peace Jam, uh, and they had a global warming process, pro- protest in downtown, and International Food Festival at the senior center. And for HERO, uh, which starts for, which stands for Health Education Resource Opportunity, we got to, uh, free CPR and first aid training for students who are enrolled in HERO. We also, over the summer, did, uh, job shadowing, which is a three-day-long, um, residential program in U. We also, over the summer, did job shadowing, which is a three-day-long residential program in UVM. And we got to job shadow health providers in UVM Hospital Medical Center and Northwestern Medical Center in St. Albans. And they also paid for scholar, they also gave out scholarships for me. And VSAC gave out scholarships for two other students to go to a health careers exploration in Dartmouth College over the summer. Yeah, and HERO is starting soon again. They have the orientation coming up.
So recently, we had Spirit Week, and a lot of people came and helped us decorate the hallways to make it like more festive. And the students really liked it because they didn't take it down this year. So that was good. The days in the week were themed, and some examples are twin-day school colors. And we also had Culture Day, which allowed us to show our cultures and how diverse we are. Other things that happened was Black Knuth got 100 goals during the homecoming game. And the boys are still undefeated, but maybe the girls aren't though. But soccer season's coming to an end, so we might see the boys playoffs.
Coming soon.
They might win this year.
Let's hope so.
Yeah.
They've had a good run here for a while.
They get cocky.
They've got some things to work in.
It's confidence, it's confidence. Okay, so we're going to talk about our experiences as Sean asked us. I'm going to talk about my experience in Burlington Tech Center. I'm doing Health Science Academy. I'm taking college-level courses to prepare me for having a career in healthcare. Taking anatomy and physiology through VTC, medical terminology, human growth and development, and much more. And this course I particularly liked because it's very fast-paced. So I feel challenged and I'm never bored. It's very much like a college class. There, we get lectures, exams, presentations, and a lot of homework, of course. And it made me think about, like, how much it's preparing me for college and how it will make my transition to college much smoother. And I'm thinking we should bring back some of that stuff to our classes here in Winuski. I, we really need to work on exam-taking skills because although we're moving from to GP and GXs, which is getting away from getting tested, we still need those skills because colleges are still having them, so we need to work on that. And most importantly, we have hands-on work during tech. We are currently doing basic stuff like blood pressure, pulse, changing bedsheets and stuff like that. And later in the year, we're going to do job shadowing in the hospitals, including surgery, which we're not supposed to do until we're 18. But because I'm in the program, it gives me the advantage to do that.
So I am in early college, and I'm not enrolled in CCV, but I take classes there because VTC doesn't have all the classes that I want since I want to be a surgeon. So I'm going to go down the biochemistry route. My experience at early college has been rough because I have a lot of free time and I need to learn how to time manage my work and my assignments. And also juggling soccer at the same time is really hard because I have to be committed to the team, show up to practices and the games. Some other things that I struggled with and am learning from is how to study for quizzes and tests because they happen every week. And I think I finally found the rhythm. But I think if we learned this earlier, it would be easier for people that do go to college in the future. Some things that I found cool being in college classes was the science classes because the classes that I had previously here didn't really have labs. So we just did like lectures and then assignments and then left. But doing these labs was like a new experience to me that I didn't experience here. So I wish that we had more of those here. But it depends on the teachers and-
The class.
Yeah, the class. I talked to other people about early college, and they also seemed very happy about it because they get to take the things that they want so they can get the college credits that they need to graduate in the future because we can take those college credits and bring them to our school in the future. And that's what I'm planning to do because I want to graduate in three years. So having this one year will bring me closer to that goal. I think the classes compared to Winuski and early college is definitely more challenging, of course, because it's a college class. But I kind of wish I had more challenge at Winuski because I didn't get it. And after like hopping into CCV or VTC, I was just lost because everyone else, my other friends that are also early college students, were like more prepared than me.
Next is online classes through VTVLc. This year, we had, we're very glad to have classes in VTVLc free for every student in Winuski. So we moved away for, from-
VHS, right?
Yeah. Virtual High School. And since we do not have any AP courses in our school, this is a great way for students who do want to challenge themselves to take an AP class online, although it's harder because you have to really, really manage your time online. And another thing was, we had a huge college fair with over 200 colleges in St. Mike's. And students from our school were encouraged to go because it's a great way to me, colleges.
And lastly, me and Hira are trying to be more involved and try to tell you guys new things and what we can change about the school. So the first thing is transcripts with the proficiency grading. Me and Xavier have decided that we wanted to help make the transcript because there's currently none. So we can speed up that process and help the guidance teachers. And we can also help people that want to do early decision, do it. Some other things that me and Hiba are also planning to do is talk to the principal and then figure out some things that we can fix in our school and how we can fix it.
How is always a great idea. So I encourage you to continue, for sure.
Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, the Burlington Tech Center Health Program, my daughter went through it at 15. College credits when she got out in the anatomy class that she took was exactly the same as in college, but it went a little bit slower. And she said it was the best thing ever. She's an RN now, working in Seattle. She could get a job anywhere she wants in the country.
Guess what?
A drop of a hat.
We have more college credits now. It sucks to be your daughter.
She made it. But you take advantage of it, right?
Yeah.
Your comment on time management, learn it now because when you get in college, it's expensive to do it then.
Yeah.
Anything, I want to know what distinguishes you from your unmotivated classmates? What, why are you here doing the things that you are doing after you have described a cohort that doesn't know a number of things? That feels like there are opportunities that are not available to them? And so what's the difference? How, why are you you? Because I think there are fewer of you than that other group. In fact, I'm certain of that, right?
Yeah.
So what's your take on it?
I don't know. I think my goal is just to get a good future. After all, my dad has been working his butt off to get me here. And I think like for some things I'm motivated for, but then some things I'm not. But I don't know about the other students. I think they just need guidance. And I don't think I would be here if I didn't get some guidance from other people too, so.
So is it familial, is it family, or external to school? Are you getting that guidance in school? What's the source of your motivation?
It's a combination.
Yeah.
Some students' families do not care about their education. My family is not like that. If I get a 98 on a test, my dad would be like, "Where's the other 2%?" So-
But that means your father understands the system.
I don't think it's also because-
My father just wants me to do well.
But he knows that 100 is the goal, right?
He says, "Go for over 100."
You do that.
He understands the intricacies of the system or not. He understands that, you know, 100 plus is a goal. I'm not sure all parents get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some parents do not know what their kids do in school at all, and some, they don't care. I think we need to talk to families at home. How can you support your child do well, if you want your child to do well? And if you don't want your child to do well, you need training on parenting. Because you need to set your child up for a good future. That's how we build our communities. That's how we move on as a world parent.
I think it's also a language barrier because a lot of people, a lot of people's parents don't speak English. And they don't know what their child is doing in school and out of school, so. But I don't know how to help their families know what their child is doing because they also have to be the one to want to learn English or want to know what their kid is doing.
It's interesting, at first I'm trying to raise this question.
Do our students go into this early college in VTec, the technical?
Very small.
And that's more for you all, not for you all to answer. But my other question, my real question is asking about, you do these early college, you do the VTec. Do you have to buy books and who pays for them?
For my AP class, literature class, I have to buy, I mean, I don't have to buy, I can just borrow. A lot of books, there's a huge list. And apparently, none of them is in our library. And some of them is like Frankenstein. So why aren't they in the library here in school? And nobody really pays for-
And I kind of want to ask as a follow-up, what's your average cost that you're paying for these books?
I haven't looked into it yet because I just saw the book list yesterday, but I would expect it to be high. Yeah, my textbook in my tech program, thankfully, they provide textbooks for free and we have to return it to them. But I got an anatomy and physiology textbook that was in the science, in our science room. Nobody was using it. It was just there, so I just picked it up.
So any textbooks that you need for any of the, whether it's online, whether it's early college, whether it's dual, whatever, the school district should be paying for those?
We do not know that.
I have been trying to get help from VSAC, but like it's been a very long process. So I was debating on buying it myself, and I did buy a book myself. And then my friend recommended me to go on this website to find some online books, and it actually helped me.
We also have interlibrary loan systems. So not just what's in this room, but Mr. Guile can get books from other libraries for you. So when you're looking at your book list, come see Mr. Guile. And what he doesn't have here, just ask him about, can he get it from other libraries?
Usually when I come in, I usually find the books that I need. But I did not personally go in for the AP class. Some other student went in and said that there weren't any. And from what I hear from her, there wasn't any suggestion that they could get the book from another library, right?
And I guess this is the lesson I kind of want you all to take away, is don't be afraid to ask. Seriously, the worst thing that can happen is that we say no.
I was going to ask.
Yeah, right?
Don't worry.
But no, but I want that-
Here because that's a hidden cost that I don't think that students know, and it could be a barrier.
It's a hidden cost in forcing the decision not to. And that's not something we want to have, so. By all means, so we got to definitely find a way to get word out for textbooks, supplies. That all should be, that all should be part of it.
I did get a book here.
Please also recognize, I'm hoping if you're applying to college, the impact that you've just had by just sharing that information and having us, we understand this and how we can make the school better.
Because we got to propagate it to a lot more kids if it isn't already doing that. Somehow that's not happening and needs to.
Maybe you can add it to the announcements, usually in advisory. There is a huge list of announcements that they share out. Maybe, maybe one of them at the beginning of the year can be, "When you're signing up for online classes or classes outside of Winuski, we provide books for any sort of cost that you need covered." And, yeah, sorry. We can, yeah, we just need students to go up there and talk because I noticed that when teachers are talking, students are not paying attention.
I disagree because like the advisories from last year, we had advisory leaders, and nobody would listen to them. They would only listen to the teachers. And that's a problem because we want to have, to make advisory more like useful. But it's just not working because nobody wants to.
Is that because it's new enough that it hasn't gotten ingrained yet, or?
I think kids are just in rebellion mode.
That won't be a first time.
That's where the motivation pieces come, piece comes in. If I don't care about my education or anything, I'm not going to listen to you talk right now, whether you're a student or a teacher.
Here's my other appreciation for y'all is that you're taking ownership and trying to be part of the solution as opposed to just telling us and then walking away. And so I encourage you to keep on doing this, but know that we will be here to help and support in any way possible. So thank you, like really, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, your input tonight with our guests was spot on and greatly appreciated. Don't ever hesitate to put your voice out there. That's why you're here. Good. Anything else? Did you have anything else? Greatly appreciated that.
Just about eight more agenda items.
Yeah, we got a whole bunch of agenda items. I'm gonna, did we have anything specifically that we can use input from our student reps? Because I know you guys-
I think they're good.
-school all day and-
Yeah.
-had a game tonight that you did very well at. Did very well at and exams tomorrow, so. Thank you. Well done. Yes, so we would, if you guys want to take the time here now and go and do your studies, we greatly appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you. And good luck.
Thanks.
Yep, we're going to try to get down through this reasonable piece. So the next piece on the agenda was the VSBA board resolutions. These are the things that the VSBA is going to be pursuing with the legislature as we go through the next year or around. They had, I don't know, eight or 10, 11 items on here. They already had a pursue, don't pursue, what do they call them? Pass, do not pass. So the pass really is something they're going to take on. And I didn't find any reason to argue with the recommendations that were in here. Did anybody have anything that was do not pass that we should push to have moved?
A number of them were related to the conversation tonight too.
Yes.
Just about state mandates, timely and reliable information, capital spending.
Yeah. So, okay, so we'll go with the recommendations that they have in there and keep going with that. The next item then on the agenda was admission of non-resident tuition students policy. As I understand it, this is not a policy we have in place now, but one that we're recommending. You brought forward as a recommendation-
Yeah, and-
To put in place.
My recommendation tonight for this is for me to give you kind of an overview, and this would be kind of considered the first reading. And then instead of putting something in consent because it's new, have a second reading in November where you can have had some time to think about it, a little more time before the next meeting. And then you can decide whether you want to adopt a new policy in November or whether you don't want to adopt another policy, or you want to take some more time to even think about it further. Does that make sense?
I would rather do that than to push a new through the consent.
Right, so the background on this is that you do not have an admission of non-resident tuition students. You have- You have um two related procedures. Um, and one of them I modified over the summer because there was some undue financial burdens that were occurring uh within that procedure. Uh, related to uh students that were coming tuition-free that were the children of uh staff. Um, uh teachers for the most part. And um, so when I talked to uh council, Pedro Lynn, he said it. He would recommend and most boards have a policy about admission of non-resident tuition. They don't leave that in procedures for the uh for the superintendent to decide. There is the, I put the model policy from VSBA in your packet. And so my recommendation to you would be to consider adding this as a policy. Keep the procedure that I modified from the summer. And then there is another procedure that you would repeal or that we would, I would take off the books because the procedures are in my purview. Um, because it's duplicative of this new policy if you adopted it. And basically what this does is give some really strict um uh definitions and and implementation. Uh criteria for the board to decide whether you would admit a student who was a non-resident.
All right, I know we've had this discussion, we had this discussion a long time ago. I mean, six or eight years ago. And it revolved purely at that point around um students of our teachers. Um, not necessarily just any non-resident tuition uh student. So this, this captures a broader spectrum of that. And it, the procedures, um, those are not in here, I know they're under your purview. I I think I would like to at least understand how they fit with what we have in the policy, so if we could bring those back the next time.
Okay.
Um, the question that we had years ago was, how do we wanna handle uh our staff's? Uh, students and their ability to come here to school? Um, at that point, I think we said one perk because there are not a lot of others that we offer at this point. And that was way back when, um, was to allow that to happen. So this policy wasn't in place. And I think this got brought about partially because of the whole.
Well, when you waive tuition for a non-resident, you get, we get no money. We cannot count that student, so we don't get any money in the equalized pupil count, they don't pay any tuition. And in addition, over time, if there are additional costs such as special education or other services, those are incurred by us. We do not get any reimbursement or any funding from the home district. And so that's the undue uh financial burden that we uh we have taken on a little bit because of that procedure. Um, and the reason that I modified the procedure and basically grandfathered in all of the students that are currently in the system through graduation. But um limited anyone, any staff member who would come forward with that request at this point, because there is no policy. Um, I would refer them to the board for a decision and make a rec- recommendation to you.
Then you run into the challenge over time of being very consistent as a changing board, as uh being very consistent as a board. But trying to be very consistent when you're potentially, your base is changing over time in those decisions. Why did this one get in and that one not get in? So it gets really difficult to make those exception calls as you go through time as well, so. Um, so this would be a broad policy added to our twenty-six or twenty-eight required, not required policies. But an addition to that for all non-resident tuition students. And it would include any of our staff that wanted to bring.
So if anybody came forward, I would um ask them to basically write a letter to me about why. And then I would um, uh, there is language in here, I believe, where the superintendent could kind of say, no, that doesn't fit any of the policy pieces. And would deny it at that level or move it forward to the board with a recommendation about to accept it or not. So I think maybe putting that proposed policy together with those two procedures for next month. So you can have all the backup to consider.
Okay, so I think the thing to think about here then is um, I I I think that h- having a policy for non-resident tuition students is. Sounds like it's the right thing to do. Um, the thing that we need to discuss and decide is how d- do we handle that? When it comes to the students of our of our staff? And do we, is is that any different or does this policy cover it? Because again, if they come without the tuition piece, then any of the IEPs and all the cost is absorbed here. A bunch of things can happen, right? We we had a limit of five, can only have five rolling through. Um, you can't make exceptions after the fact because it turns into an IEP, right? I mean, that you can't really allow it and then say, oh no, we can't do that because just that, right? That that's gonna cross some lines. Um, so we get a lot of things to, i- it could be just as simple as adopt a policy, put it in place. And, you know, exceptions one at a time, but they're few. So.
So yeah, so that actually would be a separate policy when you're talking about waiving tuition. This is about tuition students.
Just tuition.
Just admitting somebody who actually is gonna pay.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with waiving.
In the procedure right now, like I said before, I took out the part that waives tuition for employees. So it's no longer part of the procedure.
Okay.
So if somebody came with that uh request, it would come to you at this point.
Now they're all in here, well, they would all be.
Right, and so you would, you would most likely say to them, yes, we would be willing to take you if you pay tuition. Or or no, we're not willing to take you even if you are willing to pay tuition for the following reasons.
Okay.
And if they're asking you to waive it, I would probably stop it at that point. Because procedurally, there's nothing that says, and I would tell them that there is no policy or procedures. That um allows the superintendent or the board to waive tuition for um a non-resident.
Cause they're gonna take it out of the procedure.
Except in specific situations in the procedure for our own students who have been here for a certain amount of time. And then they, you know, if they're leaving, you know, for the last six months of their graduation and they wanna stay. Or if they bought a house, you know, and and uh march and they wanna stay through the end of the school year, you know, there's some situations of continuity and.
Yeah, we've hit those a few times and I've always granted that last piece of the year, but Margaret, you had a.
How you work around the the fact that that's compensation for people who have children? That people who don't have children are are, it's not available to people who have children.
Right, right.
Cause that's in real dollars, it's compensation.
That is.
I can't imagine it has not come up before.
Absolutely, the the uh, one of the arguments that we have to, we have to work through, for sure. So that, that will be a part of the piece, so. All right. Anything in there that anybody saw that didn't seem right, we can have that adjusted before we. All right, so we'll bring that back then for a second reading. Uh, I would s- is it critical that we get that in in November? I would wanna do it as quick as we can because it's fresh.
Yeah, I I don't know of any, I don't know of any current, you know, situation that's that would be coming.
I was thinking more time in in the agenda, so we'll have to see. Let's let's plan on putting it in in November and and then uh we can make sure it fits. All right, um newsletter topics. Um, you had this one um going in. And Anne had sent her thing out saying, heads up, I need, did, do you get her request for input?
At the general request, yes.
Okay, I'm good.
If I pass the deadline, I hope so.
Well, you get a few days, you'll get, she'll give you a few days if you're nice.
She have my name specifically?
If you're nice to her.
Huh?
If you're nice to her.
My name, I don't know.
I think she does, I'm I'm sure she does.
Yeah, that. But thank you, Sean, I got the newsletter this time.
Oh, you did, good.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Um, and then according to the schedule, and I usually have this up already, this would be mid-November, Matt, for the December. You got the next one coming. Um, topics, do you have something you've been pondering? You got it?
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna email me ideas, maybe that's.
Anybody get anything right off the top that, I mean, we should. Uh, ha- is is Emily hitting every newsletter with a capital project update? Okay, so that's not something we necessarily should touch specifically, okay. All right. So yeah, if anybody's got any topics within the next week here, cause Matt's up for him in a month. And then we have.
Topics for Margaret, it's up in less than a month apparently.
Yeah.
A topic. You don't want my topics. Ever, I, yeah, I have to run all my topics by you so you can say, Margaret, no.
No, I was joking correlation, just getting them up to speed on like correlation and so that they can help understand that when the budget goes out.
Okay, so you, why don't you do this one?
No, I was helping Matt out, he was asking.
Oh, you wanna help Matt?
I thought you said you had a bunch of ideas.
I got nothing. You can email me with something nice.
Okay, all right.
I mean, some of it is, is like I said, like, uh, letter writing right now and and helping people write the content. Of like, you know, here's the capital plan, here's what what's going on. It's an update on the Capitol bills project that's coming up through the s- whatever, the Senate. And here's items that you can, we can all write as citizens. We can write this letter and make sure you mention that some of the money is gonna be for safety and this is gonna help us.
I'm not doing anything that has anything to do with the budget and money.
So maybe, maybe a slightly, a slightly different direction.
Some kinda something else.
It doesn't have to be long, but maybe something along the line of of uh. Board undertaking some advocacy with legislation and we may need people to help. A letter writing campaign to help us advocate, ju- as simple and high level as that. And and just, you know, with our meeting tonight, meeting with these guys and understanding better. And does that he'll help with the advocacy? Maybe, with that.
You said we under- uh, we understand better?
No, no.
After meeting, after this tonight, we understand better? I mean, it's like.
We understand, we don't understand enough.
Uh, but it's like, it's so, it's, it's talking about very, trying to impose a very traditional bureaucratic system. On a school district that's very non-traditional. I mean, there are questions, the kinds of questions that he asked, for example, about low graduation. That would take days to, but it, but on on the one hand, days to explain. On the other, he explained it himself by talking about bringing somebody in the hall. And what they understood just by standing in the hall, it's just, I mean, that, it's the same kinda situation.
Right.
I mean, if you understand the population, then you understand why the graduation is.
And and ninety-five percent of the state doesn't understand the, e- especially in the legislature, don't really understand. The 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 challenges and then what we have going on here. Which is a problem, right? And then because, so so then we have to stand up and advocate a little harder for ourselves because there's not gonna be a lot of people to help. So I don't know if that, does that help even get a thought going? If it doesn't, let me know and I can um, I I think that that's good to get that discussion started so we can, cause we're gonna be asking here pretty quick. All right, next item, um, handling of operational complaints, our policy four point three and our write-up on that one. Um, we are in our second or third go-around here, just any uh. I got, Sean, I've got you uh referenced in here a number of times as being um. Our evidence that we are not getting in the way of the handling of operational complaints. I think we've all got a pretty good handle on, take it with the teacher, take it with the principal, take it to the superintendent. Before it gets taken to the board, give everybody an opportunity at the next level. Take the complaint, make sure you understand it. I think the biggest thing to me, when I, when I read this thing, and the biggest thing that comes to me is when people come to you. As a board member with a complaint that you can't necessarily help them resolve. But you can put, put them in the right direction or in contact with the right people. Is to ensure that first you understand what their issue is, at least at a high enough order to be able to push them somewhere. But not make them feel that you are just pushing them off like we don't own anything. And and to me, the secret to that is then following up within two weeks with a phone call or an email or a text to say, hey. I know I I couldn't specifically help you with your challenge, but did you get somebody's attention to talk to about it? Not did it get resolved, but did you talk to somebody to, about your issue? And leave it open-ended like that, cause you don't wanna offer up having it, having it fixed, so.
The hard part for me, and this is not in the policies is moving forward, how do we collect that type of information beyond like just relying on Sean? And this is what my issue was, is like, do we, do we need to create a like a central Google Doc or something that we're, we get a complaint? We type it in there and we just track the complaint to see who 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 responded? Like even like simple communications when Infinit sends something. I don't, I don't know, who, I I I actually asked five days later, did someone actually respond?
Yeah, when you get a uh, when you get a cloud burst note like that, just know that Sean and I will talk at some point about who's gonna respond. Um, because we don't want everybody just freelancing a response, cause you never know what the background is.
And that's the same thing with complaints. Like where, where are, how are we sharing that we know what the complaints are? Should there be, and once again, this is a question of like, do we wanna go that far? Because, you know, this is formalizing, right now, all of it is is like, hey, Sean, have we violated this?
Right, right, I I I think um. I I mean, does a Google Doc make sense? I mean, it would, it's a central repository uh of the eight thousand Google Docs that I've had shared with me both in school and at work. Finding them when I need them becomes a severe challenge.
I I get that, and that's what I worry about too, right?
You know, and how do you keep it flowing over time? Again, I always wanna think about a different superintendent, a different board and the district continuing to run the same way it is. Without, without issue, without hiccup. And if that's one way to do it, I I personally think that it is incumbent upon the board chair to ensure that those things are handled. But not, I don't necessarily care that I get ten of them this year and twelve of them next year and eight of them the following year. But it's that they are handled correctly as they go through time and that they are handled and not just blown under the cuff.
And for me, in some ways, you know, knowing the number tells us how well we're actually communicating the policies and as a board, so it's another form of data, right?
Yeah, to some degree, to others, it's just gonna be a whim.
It is, but it's also for me to also see, you know, that time when we get the parent that's complaining ten times, you know? But if they're going to, if they're going to different.
You get a different board.
Different board member each time, do we really know, you know, they're understanding or they're doing what sometimes what board happens is that like.
By definition, that was should be funneled then through the chair from a single point to put into a, a support. Which I think it is now, so.
And and are we coming, and and do we know that as a board to communicate that to you, like, hey, I got this request, do it, should I, you know?
Right, I'll make that very clear now. I mean, if you guys get anything that you want to have highlighted or wonder how to handle, just by all means, I I would love to hear.
And and it's not wonder, it's we just do it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
So I can, I can start a a doc in here just to see what what comes of it. But it would be a chair to document for the board to fi- to follow complaints through time. So I can uh put something in here. I can find it again, I am so Google Drive inadequate. But I'm coming, I'm learning with the best of them.
Lifelong learning is one of those things that we have.
I know, I know. All right, um, any issues with this policy? As it is written up, it is our uh report card on our performance. And is everybody, I got any other comments on it? I would accept uh motion to accept the interpretation and evidence. On policy four point three operational, handling of operational complaints as written. Thank you, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, delegation to the superintendent, three point three. So we have, we have several of these and I know these, these have been reviewed, I think Matt, you had reviewed this one, right? As well, any uh outstanding thoughts on this one? I know you said.
It was well-written and American compliance, by one note to.
My one note to myself is the interpretation on three point three four.
Yep.
Seemed a little wonky, but I didn't have a better suggestion for language.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if that, I reread it like four different times, and eventually kind of clicked in. I'm not sure if others had that same experience or not.
So, yeah, the interpretation there, I think, is, um, if you decide to, let me just... So, yeah, so the interpretation, the, the policy itself is intended at not changing the policy today, and then doing the interpretation on the new, uh, the new policy. Rather than, you're doing the interpretation on the policy the way it is written today, and if you don't like the way it's written today, you have to bring back the policy later to do it. And we haven't done that. We've, we've all, we've had a couple that we've brought back, so. And I, I don't know if the interpretation now makes more sense in light of that.
That didn't click in, but that makes total sense.
So my, my English, uh, I may need, I may need a shoehorn to get that in there better, but, okay. Any other, uh, I'll, I'll write your, uh, I'll write your, no, I'm not gonna go there. Any, any other discussion on that? I would accept a motion to accept the, uh, interpretation and evidence on policy three point three, delegation to the superintendent.
So moved.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Um, all right, FMR. Um, lot of pages. I think, Sean, there is a way, thank you, by the way, first, um, from my perspective for putting the PDF, everything in a PDF format. I think there is a way to merge PDF documents, so we can put all these FMR in a successive stream. I'm not sure exactly how to do that, but I can take, uh, I can take a check at it, and I can work with Krista to see.
Uh, we'll take care of it.
Okay. All right. And that way, I mean, it's just fewer documents, and they flow a whole lot easier when you're trying to blow down through. Um, in the memo piece of it, the, the, the write-up here is, uh, it, I think it ends up being right around nine hundred thousand dollars as a favorable balance prediction between now and the end of the year. We have obviously gone through just the first quarter at this point, so we do have some time left. Broken down, as you can see, in our instructional programs, almost six hundred thousand. Bulk of that special education and preschool. Uh, we do use, I think last year we had about a two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollar movement in some of the special ed early on. Uh, so that's not too unusual for a portion of that. And then the act sixty, one sixty-six encumbrances later on. Instructional support nineteen K, didn't bother too much with that. The administrative piece, um, IT at thirty-three here and there. Two hundred and fifteen in the operations. I think what I had heard, and Sean, I think, correct me here, is, is part of, there was some money in the budgets for some work, for some structural work that is probably now not gonna be done, based on all the work we're going to be doing as we go through time.
There was some summer work that we were gonna do that we decided not to do because of the capital project.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the other one is that we did have, um, uh, we had a custodial position that was vacant for a little while. So we were underrunning that.
So this is a, a bit higher than it has been. So I'm, I'm working to try to understand a little better some of the detail in that, working with Rebecca, um, to, to better understand that. Fund balance, that was just simply the, the, uh, general fund balance. After FY nineteen gets put in, there will be about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I wanted to make sure to highlight that. Um, that was a, a little bit bigger excess out of FY nineteen than we have had. So that, that's in the general fund balance, not in the capital fund, where we only have to, we have to only spend it on capital parts. Not a lot in the grants and miscellaneous piece, um, the, the, other than the summary at the top, at the top end there with the, the revenues, I didn't see anything in there that stood out as being real odd. And again, expenses, uh, the, I got a couple of questions into, uh, into Rebecca again about differences between this year and last year. I'm just trying to piece all this stuff together here still. But it looks like, um, we're in a healthy position, except that it's, it's a little higher than I would have hoped to have seen. But I'd rather have it be positive than negative, I guess, on the, on the high end of it, just one...
Yeah, I mean, the two big parts in the instructional program, and the reason that it's higher than it normally is, are, because we have a number of, of instructional assistant positions that we haven't been able to fill, I think, four. Um, and then with the, um, the family center closing and the preschool. Um, so there's fifteen preschool slots, you know, that we had budgeted for that.
Don't we usually though show that in the projected to six thirty column in here? You can't read the column, but there's, uh, actual budget, um, or, uh, the budget, uh, actual expenses, encumbered, the total committed, the remaining balance, and then the projected by six thirty. Don't we usually put that in?
I don't know that she'd be showing it in the first quarter yet.
That would explain then why first quarter last year was a little bit higher than the remaining quarters as well. Okay. That, I think that's getting toward part of my questions, and I'll take the rest of that up with her.
Rest assured, it's not gonna be a million dollars in quarter two, quarter three, or quarter, quarter four.
Yeah, I, um, right, it just, a little bit of a surprise. So from an FMR standpoint, I think we're, we're in good shape. Um, the, and the audit came out, um, positive for whatever was there.
Yeah, I think in Rebecca's part of my report at the end, it, it said there's an estimated, I think it's about three hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Yeah.
Um, favorable balance to be...
Yeah, I think that was shown in the fund balance here, three eighty-two, so, okay. Any other questions on all the FMR piece? Okay. Uh, superintendent monitoring report, two point four, whoops.
Can you just approve that FMR?
Sorry, yes. Accept a motion to approve the FMR as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Carried. Okay. Then, uh, financial planning, two point four, and budgeting. I didn't have any...
Yeah, no significant changes to this report, uh, you know, in, in number four. I just kept, I kind of moved the budget years on to keep three years of budgets in there. But that was the only change. And the, uh, um, the evidence in one with the audited financial statements.
Okay. Oh, you just moved it to June thirty?
Yeah, I moved it, and I keep those years, but I didn't put nineteen because it's not official yet.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, discussion? All right, um, so I'd accept a motion to approve the monitoring report on policy two point four, financial planning and budgeting. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, and then, uh, uh, budget meeting schedule as we go through here starts in December, and...
Yeah, the, the, the schedule is, it's a little bit different than it has been in the past because of Thanksgiving being that, um, last week in November, it typically falls on the second to last week. So that was the only question that I had for the board was, um, if you wanted to move that ends presentation back to the week before Thanksgiving, you know, we could, we could do that. If you feel like things are getting too jammed up. We, we do feel like what we, we have here is enough meetings and, and should suffice for a, a good budget process. But it is a little bit different than in the past in kind of doing that November meeting, so that was the only question I had for you.
Yep, so if we move it back to the week before Thanksgiving, we are in the week after our November board meeting, so that would be two weeks in a row.
Yep, November thirteenth is your board meeting, and so it would be November twentieth would be the first budget meeting.
Or do we wanna keep it on the...
Or December fourth.
Fourth. I mean, we've been able to get through fairly well. We don't have a whole lot of information in the thanks, in the November timeframe anyway, so...
Let's keep it December fourth then.
Okay. Sounds reasonable. And then, so three meetings there and one in January if we need it for a final review. Um, I'm gonna throw out right now, um, I would like to have others in the room if we can. So if you guys can go out and solicit neighbors, uh, ex-friends, well, they will be after. Anybody, neighbors' acquaintances to come in and be a part of the budget process, I think that's, that goes a long way. All right, and then the rest, we don't have to adopt that, because that's just informational, right? Nope, review and accept, I guess, okay? So I would accept a motion to accept the FY twenty-one budget meeting schedule as outlined.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, capital project update.
So I did put a, um, an update in my report.
Drawings are coming.
Yep, they are coming along. There's been several iterations, so I gave you, I gave you a link to the updated design. You know, some of the highlights there would be the, um, the cafeteria, and that they're, have repositioned the cafeteria, which I think looks really nice.
Longer and skinny, rather than square and out back?
Yep, yep, which will give us a little more green space, a little more room to move out back.
On the back side.
Yeah, and it kind of features the cafeteria towards the lobby, too, which I think is nice in the performing arts center. And it fulfills a very tangible need of the firewall down the middle of the building. You have these requirements where you've gotta have that, so if half the building burns down, the other half doesn't build down, doesn't burn down as well.
And that'll end up being between the cafeteria and the, and the...
Yeah, the wilder, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the only other thing I wanted to add was some development highlights from, from Emily that, um, you know, she's continued to, to, um, look at a lot of grant opportunities and is applying for some of them. She's really focusing, focusing on grants that provide building campaign support, and that provide unallocated funds, so things that we could get the money for that we don't necessarily have to use for like a very specific thing, but could go towards, um, you know, performing arts, for instance, or that go towards food security, for instance, and we could put that into the capital project to support in general in those areas. She is, uh, uh, meeting with our webmaster to get the Give to WSD webpage started. We are working with TruX Collins and, um, to get renderings of specific spaces, like cafeteria, the PAC, the main lobby, the middle school, so that we would be able to go to donors with some really nice, uh, renderings of those specific areas, and would be some opportunities for people to, um, uh, support very specific programs, uh, spaces. Let's see. She is getting that, uh, campaign committee going, so she'll be inviting, um, Alex and Margaret to come, and I think it's gonna be the first week of November. She also has a number of Winuski residents and some folks from outside of Winuski, but in Chitting County, who have experience, um, with these capital campaigns, who have also agreed to be a part of the committee. She's continued to work with some local experts, um, person from the UVM Foundation and others, from the Greater Burlington YMCA to really, uh, refine the, the development plan. So she's doing great work and moving on a lot of fronts, and she and I have had, I think, uh, five, uh, visits with, uh, potential supporters. Uh, we've brought them around the building and done tours, and showed them the plans, and talked to them about some potential opportunities, and kind of that first stage of getting, um, some potential support lined up. That's all I got.
All right. And, uh, so upcoming dates, just an early dismissal and parent-teacher conferences and list. I had in here an executive session for labor negotiations. Given the time and the timing schedule of our meetings, I think I'm gonna push that to November. Looking around the room, I'm gathering that, and I, I'm with you. And so, yeah, I think, though, we'll, we'll definitely need that one in, in the November meeting, so.
Great.
Well, we can, you and I can talk to before that.
Yep, Monday we start, right.
All right, yep. Uh, so anything else? Um, we have some that need, all of these at the top need one more signature. All the ones that are square in the bottom already have the three. I would accept a meeting, uh, accepted, I accept a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.